Alright, we're gonna follow the meeting to order at six o'clock. Um, so that would be like, we just, right? But we just. And to the revolver, the whole is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. So, we are recording, and Norton Media is on as well. So everybody knows. Alright, so I'm gonna turn this over to you. Alright, so for those of us who have done, never done the budget workshop before, it's a little bit more casual than our typical meetings. Um, you all have two different doc, two different packets tonight. Um, the first one you have is the draft of the budget that you've seen. Uh, for many weeks now, there are um, some new pages and new information in here. For you, and then we also had a copy of the community budget survey. Which I wanna share with you, um, so you can see how um, staff and families responded. To um, the survey and what their priorities are, so. Um, I'm really happy that you asked me to start either way, but maybe we'll just do the survey and we'll get it over with, and then we can. Have that information as we talk through um, the logistics of, of the actual budget. Um, so we put out a anonymous budget survey to the community, we sent it out to all of our staff. Um, all of our families, I also shared it with um, the select board and the finance committee to send that to their membership and. Um, further, if, if they were able to. Ten questions, totally anonymous, um, and we received four hundred and twelve responses um, during the two weeks that it's open. Um. Karen, no one can see that on the other end, right, so.
Do you want me to just focus on this slide? I can do that.
You guys wanna see that then?
Yeah.
Sure.
Right.
Bye. Huh?
I won't be able to see it, but uh, classes are, well, see shorter. It's simple.
At your age. Alright. Um, alright, Karen, go ahead. I'm just gonna share the link with those people who are online. Oh, I'm sorry, fine. Oh, wait, you're, I forgot. Keep going. Let's get to the survey participants. Um, so um, fifty-four of our respondents identified by themselves as um, parents or guardians. Thirty-eight percent said they were staff. Um, eight percent were both staff and parent guardians. Um, and then nineteen others responded identified as graduates. So that was um, nice to see that as well. Um. We have a um, got a very small number of community members that don't. Currently have children anymore, and you can see that in the dark pink, it's very small. Um. Eighty-six respondents had students in grades from eight to thirty. Then the blue was uh, fourteen parents had um, students in grades four and five. Thirty-four, oh, sorry, forty-five in grade six to eight, thirty-four in grades nine through twelve, and then sixty-four families. Were, had students across multiple grade levels, and then one hundred and sixty-six respondents were Norton staff members.
So, Dr. Anna, you said this was open for two weeks, and how many times was it sent out?
Um, I'd say probably. Four? Yeah, we said, I, it went out with in my newsletter at least twice, um, and I'd say it went out at least twice with reminders from um, my office as well.
Okay.
So, four hundred and twelve responses. Thank you, Mrs. Swinburne. Uh, so participants were asked to assign a ranking for each of the following categories. One was the highest priority, what they felt was the most important, down to ten, which would they thought was the least important. Um, and they had all of the options were, are here for you athletics, educator training and professional development. Fine arts, extracurricular activities, instructional materials, maintenance of upkeep of our school buildings. Uh, class size, staff compensation and retention, technology and transportation. Um, and you can see though, so this here is like golf, you want the lowest score possible to show that it's the most meaningful for you, so. Class size came in with the lowest ranking, it was three point nine seven. Um, and then staff compensation and retention was the next um. Most important to the respondents at four point zero two. The least important to the respondents was transportation at five point six. And then athletics at a five point three seven was the top. And then what we did is we said, okay, who? Who put each of these categories in their top three? Um, so again, excuse me. There were two hundred and forty people that put the class size in the top three, two hundred and forty-three that put staff compensation in the top three. Um, and from there, it goes down to um, instructional materials, and then maintenance and upkeep, and then educator training. And this shows, shows you the number one, who, who ranked it as number one, who ranked it as number two.
Thank you for your question.
Yes, please.
Was there any consideration given to taking um, staff member and not parent, I'll just.
Actually, it's funny you even mentioned that one. I think that's the next one, correct? Uh, so this is the top three rankings by the department. Um, so you can see, for example, um, this, yeah, so class sizes. Mrs. Swinburne, would you be willing to help me with those numbers, because I can't sit that far away? Those staff, the class sizes for staff respondents?
One forty-nine, I do.
Okay, there are guardians for one forty, and staff ninety. Okay, so the dark purple is the parent guardians, the light purple is um, the staff members that don't have. Young eyes of Mr. Schleifer, apparently.
Are you ready?
Um. There, oh, here we go, at my age. Um, and then the next one was uh, staff compensation and retention, that was a hundred and forty-four parenting guardians and ninety-seven staff members. Um, we knew that that would be a question that would come up, especially because we have about forty percent of our respondents were staff, or sixty percent were, were families.
How was that, like, what was the makeup of that question, like? I, I guess I'm trying to understand what? Was it, they should be paid more, they should be paid less, like, what was the?
Just, it's something that we should prioritize, so um, the, from the participants in this survey. The majority of people, or the most amount of people felt like class size is something that we should prioritize in our conversations about the budget this year. Staff retention is something that we should, is the second most important thing that we should um, prioritize in these conversations. Um, and when we, Karen Dennis.
So. Staff compensation slash retention. Uh, the only thing I would say is that I think they're, they're potentially two, two very different things, right? So, compensation is compensation, cost of data, so. Retention can mean a lot of a couple of things, uh. One thing can mean keeping the staff you have wanting to stay here. Uh, but you may also look at it like, I consider retention not letting them. So, and it's not clear to me that staff compensation retention means. That I wanna pay them more, or they don't wanna cut a bunch of positions, like, it's not clear from this exactly what that means, but honestly.
Okay.
So, it's, I, I, I know it's a hard, it's, it's, it's a weird thing to do, particularly when you have to kind of. Analogyize it so that everybody looks at it, says, okay.
This is the same thing.
Yeah, right, so, but just keep that in mind, it's not, obviously, but definitely.
Alright. Um, and then, we have actually shared with you all of the comments. Um, which I will not go through, um, but I will give everyone a few minutes just to kind of look through them. Um, they are very interesting, um. I have an amazing team, and Karen and Pam spent a huge amount of time going through this and categorizing all of the comments. To um, give you a little bit of an idea of what people are talking about. Um, so, thank you to them for spending all this time and, and for categorizing this data and putting it all together for us tonight.
And if I could just comment and say, we didn't edit these, um, if anything, we might have taken a name out if there was a name or an email address, but other than that, we didn't.
What is our current average class size by this? If it's a question waiting to.
No, I, um, so currently at the elementary level. If I can find the right page here.
I'm assuming this isn't, all the comments have just gone, we've got selected.
Oh, no, they're every single comment. Uh, these both from staff and. Every comment. All pulled together. Um.
Just from both community members' answers?
Yes, yep, every comment we received, so right now at the elementary level, um, we are between nineteen and twenty-two. Twenty-three, at um, the lower levels, K to three, um, and then uh, grades four and five are twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, at the middle school, uh, six and seven, the class sizes are a little bit higher because those are divided up into four sections. Versus um, five sections at the eighth grade where they all still have low language. Um, Mr. Hayward, would you have a topic in your head, just a rough, rough class size for six and seven versus eight?
Uh, six and seven is more towards like the twenty-five, and seven, I mean, in eighth grade is more towards like the twenty. Basically about ninety-five hundred kids, thirteen on average. Divided by four versus divided by five.
Thank you. Okay, good enough. Uh, what's the high school varies based on, is it a poor class versus an elective versus maybe?
Well. Follow-up question, do we, is there? Certain state mandates or guidance on class size, or is it just a free-for-all, right from?
Um, there are times where districts will make a statement about what class size should be, or they'll put guidelines in their contract. Um, ours has always said reasonable.
Assuming we don't have to write comments.
They did not.
Let's just see, someone did hold back.
Well, and you know, I think we, we talked about, like, should we take some of those comments out, but I think it's important for people to see, like, how people. Yeah, whether it's.
Well, I mean, for the people that took the time, granted, it was a very small percentage. I mean, this is their feedback. I mean, I, I don't wanna censor them in any way. So I'm glad we put them on here.
There are kind of, so how many people are live, watching, getting? Ten, that's. Some of them staff? That includes Norton Media. So staff and Norton Media, ten people. Uh, there's some community members, parents maybe, but. That's great, thank you.
Did you have a question on the comments?
Yep.
On the instructional technology, where it's, the second one is foreign languages, isn't foreign language a requirement at high school?
Uh, it is not a graduate requirement.
But we offer more than enough opportunity for someone to take it and add it into their schedule, and take four or five years of it at an AP level.
Absolutely.
Alright, guys, just checking.
Mrs. Swinburne, we're going to go to the familiarity um, section, yes. Uh, we also asked participants to talk about how familiar they are with the budget process. Um, because we felt it was important to know how much information people had and how much information they still needed. Um, we have, you know, over fifty percent of respondents are not at all, or somewhat familiar, um, and some not at all familiar with the budget process. Um, we also asked on the next slide if people feel that they receive enough information each year to make an informed decision. Um, there were two hundred and fifty people, people say, yes, they do, where a hundred and fifty-seven people said, no, they do not receive, but. Um. This is, you know, what is their involvement, uh, you know, do they intend to watch school committee meetings, are they, um, you know? Do they look at something after it's been completed, are they not involved in any class day or other, I mean, you can see that's a very wide variety. Um, there are also some comments there about, you know, additional comments on the budget process and, and what people do. Um. We also asked about town meeting participations. Yes. Why?
So, it's like, like.
Back to fifteen years, I can read your face pretty well.
Alluded to it, uh, involvement in district's budget process. Uh, attend, watch all school committee meetings, involve in budget process, what's the number there?
That's seventeen.
Karen, how many people do we have right now?
Eleven.
Well, by the way, sort of media is ten.
Yes.
And there are no people here, so we're seven people short of people who always watch every single one. And how many are there?
Two.
And seventeen's on there. So.
So it might be, attend, watch some of the school committee meetings involving the budget process, a hundred and twenty-two? Am I reading that right?
We have a hundred and twenty-two, almost people.
Oh.
Right. Actually, I would, yeah, oh, yeah, exactly, that's, that's.
Okay.
Those are people who are, who are present.
Uh, let's go to town participation. I think that these questions were designed to help us figure out how we can reach more of our shareholders within the community. So we know where people are involved and where they're not involved, um, you know, it's, it's helpful for us to be able to, to reach out a little bit more. Um, so a hundred and fifty people that respond to the survey are not town residents. Um, and then it, it goes from there, you know, I always vote, I usually attend, I sometimes attend, et cetera. So, hold on, so I have wondered, and sometimes people responded, a hundred and fifty don't even know this town?
What, it's staff?
Staff, okay, staff. Yeah, we shouldn't even go here. That's why it's staff or school choice is what I was thinking, yeah, so there's, there's more. It could be school choice, so they're more involved than, okay, I'm just, it could be school choice or it could be our staff. I don't. Okay, thank you. You're welcome. Um, and then Mrs. Swinburne, if we can go to how can we increase awareness and participation? Uh, Mrs. Swinburne really wants me to get involved with the dark purple, which is providing short video summaries that people can watch. Um, at home, apparently, we're starting doing some like budget TikToks or something, I really don't know, oh, maybe that would be, probably that would get people involved, honestly, so. We're gonna, we're gonna start on that, and I, I just. Yeah.
Heard no part talking.
Um, maybe my daughter could.
Except for the one person that's talking, we don't need any more technology.
Yeah, yes. Um. The dance you put with me. But anyway.
Could be the mic getting ready to make fun.
We're gonna monetize it inside the sound. Perfect. A new revenue stream. If I only knew twenty years ago when I got into education, what I'd actually be doing.
It's classes for everyone.
And, and then there, and there are comments here, just in terms of increasing awareness within the community that I will, um, you know, let you guys take a look at as well.
And here's one thing that I think, like, maybe we could do, and again, I don't know who's, just following Norton Media a little bit, like. Sometimes when you watch long videos, like of meetings or whatever, someone like segments them off.
Yeah.
It's like, go and go, okay, twenty-two minutes, whatever, they stop talking. Twenty-eight minutes, they stop talking, oh, that's whatever, but that might be a little helpful, because. You know, we have the time to sit down and watch a two-hour.
Yeah, you can tag, it's just hard to kind of finally. Yeah, I mean, if we could do some, like, to your, like, tab it almost, to go along with the agenda and just say, if I'm interested in, you know, the transportation voters or something, you know? But you don't wanna listen to, unfortunately, we love our student group, but if you don't wanna listen to them, then you can skip to the part you do listen to.
Yeah, and if you guys listen to podcasts, the podcast's always like.
Exactly. Yeah. Right, yeah.
Let's see if we can get that on.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Rick.
Wow, some people really do. Now, in the past, looking at one of these comments, we did offer childcare at town meeting, if we expected.
Yes.
High numbers, but it's not routinely offered.
No, um, I would say probably the last time it was offered was during the last overall vote. Um, we, we did in the past with the debt exclusion for the high school as well.
Yeah, but I don't think it was widely attended, though, right?
Or, those, so those meetings were, and those.
No, no, we're saying for the child.
Oh, for the childcare, I, I would have to reach out to champions and see if they have any recollection of, um, how well it was utilized at that time. Can't make love, can you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least they spaced it out.
Yeah.
Do we have a backup?
No. We do not. I actually was thinking maybe we should make cards for that. Um, and then the final question that we asked was, um, what areas of the budget do people need more information or clarity on? Um, and that are comments titled, so, um, the curriculum was the highest um, request there. And then uh, state and federal aid. And then um, special education and school choice for the next few, and then there are also comments um, regarding those.
I've been making more work for someone, sorry. Is it possible to call out to look at staff first meetings or not? Yeah, okay, we actually.
In terms of the comments? Or in terms of?
Kind of in terms, I guess, kind of a little bit of everything, but like, I feel like, you know, what areas of the budget need to receive more information or clarification?
Mm-hmm.
You know, obviously curriculum's very high, state and federal aid are high. You know, I, I would like to kind of see where, is it the educators who are asking to say, hey, we need more information on this, or is it like community members? Cause I feel like that could. Maybe create us in a right direction from a standpoint of how you communicate with staff and how the principals communicate with staff.
Yeah, but, but let's look into it, um, cause we definitely have staff that are also families, or accept their marriage, right, so we would.
Yeah.
Think we could probably do something on that.
It's a, it's a semi-loaded question too, because I don't think.
Correct.
Beyond the staff, like, you know, my neighbor doesn't know about S R funds or anything like that, you know, I mean, so i- it's just one of those. You know, the, the staff might know some of the key terms that they hear in their staff meetings or something like that, where, you know, average Joe doesn't. So I think it's.
Yeah, and like health checks, I'm assuming most community members aren't really kind of voting, just health checks, no offense, but maybe they do, but I'm assuming that's probably mostly voted to teachers. Maybe.
And, and it could be, um, you know, community members looking, they, they, they wanna see contracts, they, you know, they wanna see. Yeah, and they're all on our website, um, you can get my contract, you can get any one of our administrators that is sitting in this room right now, you can have access to all their contracts, the teachers' contractors online as well. Um, a lot of the information that goes along with health insurance, um, and other benefits that all town employees receive, it's all up on the town Morton website, um, so there is.
Now, the annual camera report comes out, it's not that old, but yeah.
Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions about the survey, or um, give you guys more time to kind of look through it if you'd like. Um.
I think it looks like it's most like, that's up.
Yes, it is.
Really else, just, it's a big question.
Yeah. Um, so in the um, the budget packet tonight, um, a lot of this things that you've seen before, the first few pages. Um, if we go to the page at the top that talks about other revenue sources and revolving funds. Um, that's something new that we've shared with you uh, this time around, um, and I'll let Christine talk through that, please.
But just for clarity, nothing's really changed on the other page.
The other page is, nothing has changed at all, it's exactly what you saw um, when we were here.
Joint meeting and everything else.
Yes. All of those numbers are exactly the same.
Um, so we added a page for that, as Jen said, for the other revenue sources, which um, on this page includes revolving funds. Um, you just, there's like, where you, um, explanation of each fund, including school principal, freezer, facilities, preschool, athletic. These are the most utilized funds, help off that are present. So, um, that one didn't include those. These are uh, projected amounts, this F, um, for F I twenty-five. Um, and on the right on the grid and bottom also shows the number of F T fees that we are jacked up to get.
To what? Yes.
Um, to, I add it. Are gonna kind of close on.
Okay.
So I think it's um, important for people to see that there are other revenue sources that come in, um, in terms of, so like, until these are athletic, um. Both it's student fees that they pay to participate, as well as rental fees that we receive, um, from our, our new fields. Uh, we charge preschool tuition for our, our mo, our peer models, um, that are there, and then that offset, offsets some of those teacher salaries as well.
And, and I look at preschool, uh, you're, you're paying four point two positions out of that because they are, there are four point two preschool positions that we're using for abstracting that.
So there are definitely more than four point two preschool positions?
None of them were, that were.
Yes.
Four point two.
Those are for preschool specifically.
Okay, and same would be said for facilities?
Yes.
And the two at school choice, what's the, what's?
Um, last year, when we were um, offsetting the budget, uh, we took two positions, um. And.
So it's just two jobs?
It's just two jobs, yeah, yeah, nothing specific. Uh, the circuit breaker money, we've talked, we talked about this the last time we were here, that is the reimbursement that we receive for our district placements. Uh, in transportation from state, uh, that percentage of reimbursement varies from year to year, um, but that is what we are projecting to receive um, for F I twenty-five.
So, circuit breaker is normally paid out after, well, after we start the fiscal year, right?
Usually does.
So we can, all we can do is essentially guess.
Yeah. Usually we know, um, in early July, what the reimbursement is going to be, um. Sometimes we get lucky and have it a little bit prior to that, um, but it is based on what we're hearing, um, from our associations, Christine was at Masco earlier today. Um, and what the governor is projecting, but yes, for example, Dan, last year, um, we were told, or the. It all said that we were going to get seventy-five percent transportation. We actually got the final number at the end of August or September, it was fifty-seven percent. So that was something that we had to look into our budget and say, how are we going to make that? And that's why we try to have those in those contingencies where possible.
It, it's, it's just baffling that we have to wait to know something that affects our budget that started three months before then. I think.
Um, we also have the intelligence grants that we received each year, um, these are state and federal grants that we are, that we apply for. That Norton automatically receives, um, what we've talked about for the federal special education grant, the title one, title two. Um. Those numbers fluctuate year after year, the title one grant, um, was roughly around four hundred thousand, probably about twelve years ago, it's now down to eighty-three. Um, we really can't predict, although that title four grant has definitely increased over the years, we started out with getting about ten thousand dollars.
But when it comes to grants. Something like grants, uh, the, is there like open enrollment for grants, or do you know, like, by, say, the end of April, all the grants available, or the next year are open and you apply for, or is it? It could be October.
All of these federal grants come out with our week in July typically, um, and we are able to see what our allocation is at that time. Uh, the department does, at least in terms of the title grants, do a nice job in terms of. Sending you the data that they're going to use for their formula. sending you the data that they're going to use for their formula list. And they will send you a warning if they think that you're no longer meant to be eligible. Uh, so we received that data probably, I'd say, three or four weeks ago. And at this time, we're in good shape, so we shouldn't be seeing a cut to the programs totally, but our numbers can fluctuate. Uh, and we are able to apply for that grant between July and beginning of October. We, I wrote that grant for years and goes grants for years and years, so after argument's doing that, we always have it done before school starts, so wanna make sure we have those funds based on.
Over the first one, there's a federal special program, we get seven hundred and forty-one thousand in the state. And then we use that money to fund eighteen point seven five positions.
Yeah, technically par professionals.
I was gonna say, mostly par.
Yeah.
Is that for kinda all these grants, mostly par or?
Um, so, uh, the title one grant, those are reading specialists uh, that work with our students that are, uh, starting readers, um, at the elementary level. Uh, I just wanna mention that, um, that title four number is wrong, it should be seventeen one thirty-four. I took that. Which is a big difference, but. Um, and then I also wanted to showcase school choice money that we've received, um, over the last six years and what we've spent out of that. So you can see in the first year, eighteen nineteen, which is not our first year of school choice, um, we received six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, we spent about four hundred points, so we're being carrying over some of that balance year after year. Um, as you can see this current year, we are projected to receive one point six million and we have, um, encumbered one point eight million, uh, added today.
So something like the school choice funds, is there any restrictions on what that can be used for?
Just restrictions that we've put on them.
No, that's not, sorry, I dropped it wrong. Um, so you're, you're, you're taxing my memory here, uh, here.
I love to do that.
Yeah, so I, I've actually, I've actually, I actually called these guys a long time ago and talked to them about it. So, um, it's, it's supposed to be used, the, the money is supposed to be used for the education of those children you brought in under the school choice program. However, obviously, it's not, it's not only good for that because, you know, there's like some takes variable costs, et cetera, it is, it is possible to, so, uh, it is then supposed to be used in a, in a manner or method that would be, um, would benefit the most children possible, so, um, I, I don't think you could use it, and this is a little bit of, um, of contention, this is something we argued about in the past, but not, not you are, but, uh, it's smarter. You know, I don't think you can use it, Princess, could you say, I wanna build like a skating rink?
Yeah.
Like I, I think that is.
No, I was just thinking like, you know, if we had like an outstanding bill in the summer, and this is our easiest access, easiest to access.
So I'm gonna say something, and you guys have all heard of building cost. And money's fungible, right, so, I mean, Peter, yeah, exactly, so, can we use school choice money for that? No, but we can use it to pay a teacher, so we can move it from that line to the pay the teacher line, if we took the money that wasn't paid to the teacher. Paying bill, so, yeah, I mean, ultimately you can, like anything, you can work it so that you can pay whatever you need to pay.
No, my, my thought was like, you know, obviously like, you know, I'm not gonna use like school choice to like buy a plow or something, like, or something, like, it doesn't go in the lane, that's what it is. I know we have certain accounts, like, I believe the high school parking account definitely can be used for high school revolving accounts.
Yeah, right, so.
Just a little.
So, so, school choice, I mean, yeah, theoretically there are like, there are supposed to be, uh, not hard restrictions, but there are things that they, they smile upon, things that they're proud of, using it for, however again. Because you can move money from one column to the next, and you can always find a way around that to, to do what you need to do, uh. You know, we're not really in a position to file it, so, it's not really most to us, but I think, yeah, I mean, I understand your, you know, what you're having. And, and that's gotta be the answer basically, so. For us, if we're bringing in more money than works done.
Not for much.
Not, 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 well, we should have a decent amount.
Change.
In our account.
So.
What's in our account right now? Hypothetically. Does not be exact, sometimes it works. I mean, basically coming out of this file, minus the by dot com, what do we look at?
So, I mean, this upcoming year, we're projected to spend two million dollars in choice, and we're probably gonna get roughly one point six. But we're over spending what we have.
Well, we're not over spending, we're, we're spending more than.
We're spending.
Yes.
Zero, because we have some in the comp.
We had some in, yes.
Sorry, and, and maybe like, the follow-up to this question is, when does, when does that account go? Theoretically, go dead, can't go dead about.
Right, but when, when does the money, when does the unsure run?
Right, when, when do we no longer, when are we no longer able to spend what we have, it sounds like that's.
We're getting.
That's, well, the next question, right, because I assume we're spending everything that we have in reserve right now to be, if, if we're bringing in one point six million and we're spending two, 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 just two, two million, so that's four hundred thousand. I, I, I'm guessing that probably gets pretty close to zero in reserve.
So we have a million in there now, um, about, so we have like four hundred thousand that will come back, so, so six hundred thousand.
Okay, so we have two hundred thousand additional, right, so we have two hundred thousand left to, to use.
Yeah, right now it's six.
But.
We have a million.
But we're, we're, we're always spending much more.
One point six.
So let's say for next year, we're spending one point nine, but we're only bringing in one point six.
Or, or is the four hundred encumbrance, is that what you're talking about? Is it covered because we're gonna be spending two million?
Yeah.
Because we're spending two million, it's not four hundred, it's covered with other things. Okay, so we have six, so next year we'll use another four of it, we'll have two, year after that, we'll be four, uh, sorry, uh, two hundred million of each, basically. So, I mean, educationally, that's, so we're a year, we're two, two budgets away from.
And that's assuming that the school choice funds continue to come in at the same rate.
Oh, yeah, that's a whole other.
Right, cause I mean, the further we get into this package, the more conversations we're gonna have with that.
Right, yeah, so if I do quick now, what the funds we receive versus the funds we expended, is six hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars change? How do we have a million?
So this is only from twenty eighteen?
Gotcha.
So we actually, we started choice in the fall of, of twenty fourteen. So I didn't give you all the years, um, all the way back, I mean, we could do that, one of the things that, um, Christine has started to do since she took over this role, is she has created an entire separate budget for school choice. It used to just be that we would have a district-wide school choice line, and then like a J C S school choice, a L G M school choice, um. So it was really difficult to kind of do a quick glance where we were spending those funds. Now we can see exactly, it, it, the school choice budget, if you have it, it mirrors a regular budget. So we can see exactly where in what categories we're spending school choice funds on. Uh, majority of our curriculum materials, destruction materials, general supplies, all of that is paid out of school.
Well, we also have to keep in mind, when we started school choice, there wasn't a lot of kids coming back then, I mean, for the first couple of years, I don't think it was, it probably wasn't.
So, Christine, can you just give it back now one more time, one more world?
Do I have a balance in this?
Yes.
Um, it's a little over a million. That's, uh, cash on hand, but we have four, a little four hundred, I think I'd use the exact number, that's encumbered still, so it's less than that.
So we're probably looking at somewhere between six and seven thousand, so it's in that account at the end of this fiscal year.
Just right now.
That'll be applied to the next fiscal year's budget. That's six hundred thousand we spent.
No.
Right. The money in.
The seven thousand is, yeah, the four hundred above, the four hundred thousand we're gonna put towards next year. So, like, again, if other things happen throughout the course of the year, um, in terms of other placements for students, other costs that come through, um, substitute costs are always huge, we have people unfortunately that have to wear medical leave and we're still paying them because they have sick days and we're also paying someone to come and back fill that position. It, it's, you know, and we always try to say, okay, if we have a little bit of savings here on the budget side, what can we make back over into school choice? So look, as Dina says, money's fungible, and so at the end of the year, we have a much better idea of exactly what that number is.
So that's the inherent problem with us guessing when we start our budget, that if we project high or low,
Mm-hmm.
we could be overstretching ourselves, so we have a little bit left over.
Or not.
So, so what? Why would I not just spend to zero right now?
That's what, what kind of, yeah, but why would I not spend to zero?
That's some of the things that we're gonna talk about in terms of, you know, what are our other options here? Um, I think spending into zero, the risk that you have is, it's, okay, now next year, it's the same as the S R funds, right? We're five hundred thousand dollars short this year because we use the S R funds, so next year we have the same problem.
It's, but it's, but I would, I would make the argument that the, that the, the risk is, is, is zero, right, it's, it's a, it's a known outcome. We, we know the outcomes. And the question is simply, do you want the outcome, you know, this coming year or the year after that, it's, it's, we're gonna be in that hole and.
I think I don't, I think I can move.
Yeah, right, yeah, I mean, well, we, we, we are, I mean, a hundred percent we are excited, feel like it, actually, as example, what we're doing is we're saying, you know what? We'll, we'll be in big trouble next year instead of this year, I'm, I'm.
I mean, we're in big trouble this year, so, I mean, we could be in big trouble this year, we're in big trouble next year.
If it's two point four million dollars now, which we'll hypothetically say, and up to the end of the year, we have five hundred thousand dollars sitting in school choice. We could be looking at saying, hey, you know what, we're done with all the school choice money, and we're gonna count one point nine, rather than two point.
Right.
For perfect, not saying we're going to do that, but that.
But we could do that.
That is an option easy, whatever.
And then, and then it's those funds are on, and whatever we take in, it's what we take.
So, yes, my question, but it certainly be completed eventually again.
Yeah, it is.
And so, we kick the can down, we're gonna still give us my money, so.
Oh, it will not.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. I guess, yeah.
Yes.
So my, my counterpoint to that slightly is, if we spend to zero to start this budget season, what happens in October if we get an out-of-district placement or something, or?
We will want to go back to the town.
Which we have no guarantee to do.
And, and we, we, we do try to build those contingencies in, like, um, private school placement fund, um, private placement, but that's two. And we, I mean, Penny and Casey can speak to the, you know, challenges that we're, we're having even today in terms of, you know, students that need an appropriate placement. So if we don't have that, then.
Is there a cap on how school choice money you're gonna have?
That?
You don't have a big sum.
So we gotta think it's just.
So you could just, hypothetically, we didn't spend any, we could just have seven million dollars in your account, but you don't have to, you can save.
I'm sure that I have for some districts, that's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't like. Quick, yeah, quick. So, but so, I mean, a lot of, I mean, a lot of, a lot of, uh, a lot of districts probably do it for the moment where they're starting to operate, but then there are some that that probably are using it kind of what we were originally supposed to use it for, which was like enrichment of the district, you know, better technology, et cetera, so. Theoretically, they bring a bunch of, questions, yeah, they bring a bunch of, uh, school choice kids, and they don't, you know, they, they get what they need, it's okay, we, we buy this one, that, okay, we're, we're kind of good. And that recurrent revenue keeps coming in, it's gonna keep on building, and they may not need to use it running then, you know, so.
Well, I, I would, I would, uh, caution them to say, you're not, or I would call them out to say, you're not invested in that, in for school choice kids. If you're sitting on that money you're bringing in, what are you truly doing?
That's why.
At least you can show we are investing in not only our school choice kids, but, yeah, I mean, thankfully, you know, this was prior to your time here, Nick, but the school choice funds are why we were one to one technology district, uh, you know.
In part of that.
Or five to, you know, or four, four to twelve, I mean, that, I, I can't even imagine, you know, taking a COVID out of the thing, but those districts, we had to drive to school and pick up a pack of paper because they didn't have any way to get kids, you know, that's their challenge, they're gone.
So I, my counterdeal would be that those districts might say, well, we didn't, we didn't need the school choice money to educate those kids. We actually already had a budget that was, you know, that, that was well combined for every kid in the building, so, I think was somebody who has like a huge school choice number is, is not going to be, um, it's, it's not gonna be a, you know, what you would consider like a poor town, it's gonna be a town that's probably a fairly well-off citizenship, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be people who are not really paying for their, for their schools. Yeah, most of those, yeah, most of those, yeah. Yeah, they may not.
Um, the next page is enrollment, um, historical and the data and, um, the projections for the next ten years. Um, it should be further up in the packet, I apologize, it's still a little bit off spot, um, but basically, um, the projections based on our current progress rates and projected progress rates that we're gonna go back up, um, just, you know, kind of recover that enrollment loss that we've had over those last few years, so something for us to think about as we, uh, continue to go through. Uh, the following page is, uh.
Close that building, one of those things.
Well, unfortunately, you know, we talked about this very recently, um, with our special education programs, we don't have the capacity to definitely look at realigning schools in terms of what grade levels are there, um, but we can never close a school. That's one year's savings for us.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've looked at, you know, quote unquote, redistricting the schools for years, if you just need to kind of pull the trigger on that, I think it was, it was talked about and then we shut down for other.
Yeah, that's starting up this month.
Um, and I, that could be, you know, kind of long overdue depending on, you know, cause you know, the things we can't project with the enrollment data is how your town is developing, housing and things like that, because none, birth rates and things like that are gonna be able to capture move-ins or anything.
Absolutely, and that's the hard part, that's what we always struggled with when it comes to, uh, planning for kindergarten, is that we literally have no idea how many kids are gonna show up.
Yeah.
And some of them show up the day of course.
Do you, using enrollment data on, school choice, killing?
Um, the historical enrollment includes our school choice students.
But the projections do not. So.
All right, they take your local, I mean, they, they move the kids up that are already there, right, so your current second graders that have school choice students, next year they're third graders, they move those cohorts up, but they can't make projections for, um, school choice based on students that are not already engaged. Uh, so for example, if you look at, um, so currently, this twenty twenty-three year that green line is, all of those students from kindergarten are, are moving up, they're going into first grade, so those are controlled, the rest of them are not because you can't make those predictions. And while we take a minute, is there anybody else that's jumped on, just wondering what the number is, thirteen, thirteen, great, thank you.
I mean, I think the body model is suspect, we really didn't have any of these enrollment fifteen apps, just.
So they're projecting that Norton is growing with those four three, that's like the jump.
Correct.
So, um.
But you're, yeah, but you're taking a distorted enrollment, you're projecting, but you're taking two hundred and fifty kids out. And then you have to add it, and then you're, then you're taking them out.
So the question is, if, if you continue to do the school choice, what are your numbers, and would that number add to?
Correct.
And that's a local decision that they can't really account for, that would be something that we would say, okay, you know, we're, we're continuing with school choice, it's X amount of students per, per year, or whatever that may be, and then they would take, so they do this report every year for us, um, as part of our membership with NetStep.
Correct.
Um.
And school choice is the only enrollment that we can control by limiting spots or dropping spots down, you know, obviously if someone's arrested.
Yeah, because one thing, school year thirteen, fourteen, you had basically twenty-five hundred kids, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then twenty twenty-eight was projected to have twenty-four eighty-seven, they have twenty-four eighty-nine, it's not perfect, but that's not an increase already.
No.
You know what I'm saying? But we're not really increasing our enrollment from where we were, you know?
It's, it's recovering.
Correct.
So it's like, we've gone down over ten years, and now they're saying we're gonna go back.
Correct.
So it's, it's not.
So we'll go back to thirteen, fourteen levels, it's really sad.
Yes, yeah, so, and that's, that's, so it was fine, Mr. Heyward was in my office this afternoon, I'm like, how do you say like, do I say like, do we like? We're just like talking for semantics.
Recovery.
Uh, yeah. So from those thirteen, fourteen, absolutely. Um, the following page is just more data that we talked about the last time we were here. Um, the following page is just more data that we talked about the last time we were here, providing school choice. Um, there were questions about the number of students at each grade level, do we see um, that we lose students? Uh, in certain areas, um, so currently, this current year, we'd have two hundred and forty-six kids. It also broke it down um, underneath for you, um, at J C S and L G N, so that you have a better understanding of how. Those numbers are impacting class size at lower elementary level. So J C S has eight kindergartners, they are divided amongst five classrooms, it's about an average of one, two students. Um, and then we could, you could do the same thing at the other grade levels, um, you know, eight, fourth grades. Seven kids, and then eight, six, seven, and eight. It's probably much more difficult to do that at a school level, as a good classes.
How do we decide on who goes to J C S and who goes to L G based on school school choice?
Um, it's often based on what what the class size is already. Over there, so we'll look at L G N and be like, okay, they're at, you know, twenty-four, 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 but J C S is at twenty, twenty, twenty. Um, we we also look at like where the family's coming from, so if it's coming from a community, like if we, if class size is the same and that's not. A factor, then we look at where the family, it would be a closer drive for the family.
Do we allow people, okay, or do we give them an option to go?
We say, this is the school that do accept you.
Do we give our teachers a choice?
Do we give our teachers a choice in terms of like where their own children go?
In terms of. Your family's in the kind of works at L G, we stick them on, I can L G.
I'll be honest. Right, I mean, it's very, it's very good, I think, you know, quite honestly, I don't know that. Um, I'm trying to think of like in the past, like where our staff has been, it always kind of works out that way, well, it just makes sense.
A high school teacher, I would say we'd have to offer them L G, because it just that schedule.
The time, right, the L G and J C S start year.
Oh, it's so awesome, it's unbelievable. Um, and then finally, uh, this is the last, yes, please, Dennis.
So, I just want to point out, because it comes up a lot, uh. Not not this, so, um, on our community, of the public. So looking at F Y twenty-four, there are two uh, two grades, there's the ninth grade and the third grade. Uh, twenty-four and twenty-five students, which are probably the only places where you could legitimately say you could. Uh, you know, if if we didn't have the school choice. Uh, I was actually, so in the third grade, the twenty-four kids bring in a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I'm not telling tales on a school here when I say that I know that most teachers make a hundred and twenty thousand dollars at our schools. So, you know, the idea that somehow by by axing that class and losing a teacher, we would make money, s- something like that.
And the third grade have split across J C S and L G N. So.
But if we did, we said, okay, we put them all in school, whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, and same thing in the ninth grade, twenty-five, so you're like, twenty-five thousand dollars, again, I know that no, no teacher in our schools. So, it's it's not hard to refuse to take in the, uh. This could always be one of those high teachers, because. Yes, but what are the resources we're looking at? That's something, Apple wouldn't care to say, well, just because one teacher, laptop, uh, especially, you know. Multiple other factors affect, so especially when sending town pays that, don't forget, so, you know. That's the paper, right?
Um, so, and we also had to kind of show you what this looks like. Um, so, in twenty nineteen, we had a hundred and twenty-nine students, if you do the simple math, one twenty-nine times five thousand. Based on what our allocation was, that was how much extra funding that was. Um, and if you look at twenty-two, twenty-three, we received an extra hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um.
So that's in addition from five, I would have been school choices, I tell you this.
And yeah, so that's addition to the the five thousand dollar base. Um, either Christine or Vinny or Casey could probably give you guys more details on how they go through the claiming process. Um, for.
I'm sorry, I was on the wrong page, can you?
Yep.
Give me those numbers, man, what am I looking at here?
So, um, what we did here to kind of show you, and again, it's not perfect math. Um, there are variables, the way the school choice funding works is that we typically, they give us an estimate at the beginning of the year. Based on previous year's numbers, and then they do another, um. You know, calculation based on our October first numbers, so it's almost like they take data from the previous year and this year, it's like, um. I can't even think of an analogy, I'm sorry, I bring this right, um, so we did like, okay, so in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had two hundred and thirty-eight students. If you multiply that by the base line of five thousand dollars per student, we actually received an a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars addition. Those are for special education services, O T P T, uh, inclusion.
So what, but what I'm hearing here is, I'm hearing that we had two hundred and thirty-eight students. Base lines a hundred and, uh, one, one nine million, we received an additional hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven, three, and that did not cover the cost of the students.
No, that's what we receive for their services.
Addition.
Additional.
Okay.
We received an additional one hundred and forty-eight thousand.
So I want to clarify something, because I just said. Uh, on spend for school choice, the sending district pays that money. Maybe not all.
So.
Someone, someone other than us pays that money.
Yes, so.
So that, and that was my point of, you know, when you say like, well, it's not just a teacher, it's a student, whatever, but we don't pay that.
So the way that it works is somebody who actually fills out the form. Yeah, over here, hold the form, yeah, so.
Very similar to the circle figure form, um, so this, it's like, it's called the um, school choice spending input data. And you, you just put in the services that, um, from the service delivery grid, and then it calculates. Depending really the number of hours, what um, staff member's doing what with the student. And then we get that reimbursed and it tells you who's the far right, if they get sent out of district. Then then that staff.
So we get a hundred percent reimbursement.
We don't pay it, if a student goes out of district, it's not our financial responsibility, the sending town.
In the district, you get a percentage based on their service delivery grid, right?
It's not, it's not a full wash, we're getting money towards it.
So if there is a cost.
Correct.
So, if a school choice student comes in.
Yes.
And they have um, speech, special needs, whatever, they're 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 in that category. And there is a cost above the five thousand in this district, and it is not entirely covered by something other than our general budget. If that is not true, then I have been for, how long have we had school choice? I have been told something wildly different since two thousand fourteen. If if that money is coming out of our general budget, I I have been lied to them. I have been told something wildly different, I have been told that if they come in and there is a, and there and there are any extra services required. That is not paid by us, if that is not true, then this is the first time I'm hearing about it.
So, they do get, and and I believe, where I understand it, and I don't know what you were told in two thousand fourteen, so it wasn't here, but. What do you do? So if I have a speech therapist, and you come in and you're getting three times thirty, right, in a group setting. Then you, we get reimbursed for the percentage of the time that you're with that person. Right?
But that's based on whatever the state.
The state.
The state rate, the state rate.
Same, same way.
We could be paying our speech language pathologist. For lack of a better word, we could pay our speech language pathologist a hundred dollars an hour, but the state is gonna say, mm, yeah, we're gonna reimburse you twenty dollars. For thirty minutes.
And if something like that the case, however, though. It's no, no, is is something, do do we typically pay our people more than the state reimbursement?
Um. If it always has to say, probably depends on the individual staff member, what their level of education is, what step they're at on the salary scale.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume the answer is yes. This is gonna wildly change my vote the next time around for school choice, so I can tell you right now. This, this is gonna change how I go around.
Why don't we give you, give you some more information, because I wanna make sure we're giving you exactly.
I I have been told something different for a long time, and and the question has come up at least once a year, if not more. And my understanding was that there was no additional cost to us for someone who came in and had additional needs. That was absolutely how it was presented to me multiple times.
So could I, I kind of ask.
There is an additional cost to this district, and I can't tell you how serious, but that's true.
So can I ask, I just wanna make sure, so when we fill out the school choice data, or, whatever it is. Does it give us an amount of what those services should have cost?
I'm actually not sure. It gives you, like just who said, a rate.
A rate.
So it's like, it's a spent teacher, it gives you for how many hours they're pulled, it gives you a rate, it's like a whole rate of the different.
And what else has the state ever given us? Additional dollars? In that regard, because the answer is zero. We know, we know.
Super dive on this, um, because as I'll be honest, I thought it was. I assumed, because we've all been saying the same thing for how many years, that it was really not a difference. So let's, let me do some more research and we'll talk, I'll bring it, I'll bring some more data on Thursday.
You thought it was not a difference.
I thought we got reimbursed the entire.
Okay, so you thought it, I thought it, Sherry thought it. Um, but Dan, I want to speak for you, a lot of people thought this, I wanna get something to do this for years.
Yeah.
When we talk about, you mentioned a three, three times ninety, is that a one-on-one session with that school choice kid? So. That was I have a kid just like, oh, so if there's three kids in that small group setting. We're only gonna get reimbursed for one of them, which would be a pro-rated, if you're teaching someone for a hundred dollars an hour. That school choice kid might only be thirty-three percent, right, exactly. Okay, that's where my mind.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we still, to 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 clarify also. And in certain programs, so we can't just refuse, why do you have school choice, let me be clear. We cannot just blatantly say this child, no. However, if we have programs, and we've done this a couple of times this year, this summer. Where I am close to capacity, whether we do not have the services, so. You can have so many kids in certain like specialized programs, you have a limit in the number of kids you can have in a program based on the number of staff. That you have, so for example, most of our specialized programs are at ten to twelve, students had a max, that's where you get maxed. So if I'm close to that number, I can then say to Jen, if she makes the call, don't pour that. We do not have capacity to bring this job in to us, right, into our program.
Should I say, yes, yes, but by, so. Let's, let's go back, next step. How many kids apply for school choice? Is it two hundred and forty-five, and just one man?
So that, so that number is incremental, obviously, over time, right? Um, typically, we we see the largest number is in kindergarten, because those families are, wanna start their family at at the beginning. Um, I'd say we could probably have anywhere from.
It's all good, both are acceptance rate on school choice.
It's almost a hundred percent, because we can't legally, we can only deny them access for something like. We don't have enrollment program, or they have a felony record.
Why can't we, so we can say our class house is too big, we don't want you.
But we can say that if. When we voted, we said we can totally accept three students who grade two. So if we have open school choice, we cannot deny them access unless it's something like that.
And we can do that order, the other thing that we've done is if they, if they have services or the intensity of the services beyond what we have, right? So that's the case, and then what we're trying to say here too, is if we have a student. Who, let's say, is one of one of our specialized programs, and it comes to the point where like, okay, we can no longer service them. Right, they're here, the intensity of their love will meet beyond us, then that goes back to the sending district. Uh, and they then have the choice to either do the programming themselves, or go to the I P themselves. Uh, try to do it in their district, or in many cases, they say, you guys find the district, I mean, you you guys find the. Uh, district placement, and then they put the bill, and then they take over the I P.
So how often does that happen with school choice? So that's actually happened, um, it's about three times over the last two years, um, so we've we've outplaced. Three students, four school choice students, um, in the district. Uh, interestingly, two of those students, we've kept a programmatic, so that that means that we sit down on the I P meetings, all that stuff. Um, but the their sending district has taken over the fiscal responsibility and the transportation costs and all of that. Uh, but one of the students went back to their home sending district.
I just think about for those particular students, and I know how good our special ed department is. That all of the resources and time and energy that that team is putting into that student, but yet. We may not be getting reimbursed from the state to really compensate that, is I guess my.
In the design, in in some cases, I mean, again, it's not a lot of number, it's hard to, it's hard to quantify with whatever. And and I'm not minimizing it, but.
We had a time that these teachers and specialty staff are putting to try to keep, to try to support these students, right? And then that ultimately Norton is like, we cannot service you, you know. You either need, you have these options, so now you're getting sent out of district, and I just think about like all of that, that, and then those special ed. Teachers and support staff are not necessarily, if all of their time and energy is going here. Is there a lack for the students that live in town?
No, just, I mean, I guess the point would be no, but what we're doing is burning out the teachers.
And I think our, our, I mean.
Their kids will do better.
Yes, it's within a reasonable number, but we're gonna have those those students anyways, I mean, we're gonna have school choice. Right, we have to be careful about our stats, right, so I have to be very careful, I go a little hard, I go, I'll go see, so, again. You know, there are a few kids in that situation, um, no doubt, um, we we tend to move quickly. To to contact the other district in those situations, um. Maybe compared to how we would do it with our.
So, but.
Did you ask?
I think we almost have to, like, look at tailoring this a little bit, till we get a little more.
What part of that information can we look at? And and this is something I would ask for, look at the school choice number and how many kids are in that special education environment.
Absolutely, yeah, I believe we, we should have, um, thinking that part. So right below, we talked about the number of, um. Indirect students that are I Ps and what that percentage is of, um, our population. And then the number of school choice students and what percentage that is of school choice.
Yeah, and and that's great, but what I think we really need to look at is, we need to look at. When it's, when it's an indirect I D P or a school choice person, what's the reimbursement rate? And what's the average? If if it's a three times thirty, but there are a room with, you know, nine other kids, so it's ten people, and reimbursement rate is, you know. Half of what we we pay, then that's great, okay, fine, right, it's actually, it's actually subsidizing our, our bank. Whatever, that's a teacher, I'll sort of, whatever it is, but if it's, you know, ten kids and reimbursement rate is one-twenty. Then that's an issue, and I would make the, admit that if it's even to to, I guess, to Christine's point, where I think you're saying, if it's even one-ten. Then we probably are better off saying, we don't want that going forward, and I know we can't just say no to them, but but we can certainly change. Our our methodology, like, oh, we may want to say, well, we don't want to do that anymore, because it's actually, um, it's it's net. Uh, you know, a wash monetarily, but we're taking time away from our own kids.
But I think in current day, around, you'd have to say no, you can't say no to specialized.
No, we under, I understand.
No school choice.
Yeah, I I understand, and I would, I would say, because this now gets into kind of something that next time, but like, are are we making money or losing money? Well, if if it's five thousand per, and every cost is, you know, incurred by sending district or someone else, then we're making money. But if it's five thousand per, but if there's extra costs, I mean, we may make our money, we may not, now, now, it's a, it's a little bit sketchier, right? So, I mean, I think, I think we probably need to see those, obviously, like, how many kids are there, actually need to see that, like the reimbursement for.
We can do that, but it's, we're also bringing in one point six million dollars that we would have. And using two million of it this, that this upcoming year, that would be another two million dollars that we would be. That we would not have that money, so, like, we have to remember that. We don't pull this data together, but.
We took those kids out. And we had to kind of spread.
Yeah, but that's always our, we're not shutting down, I'm not a classroom, if you're.
I don't have like a, you know, you know. Best programs, right, and I, I know there's some school choice kids in our best programs. We have four of those, I'm still going to have four of those, right, and I understand to see your, your point, um. But, you know, we're not, we're not gonna close those, so then we're gonna lose all the regular and, or the inclusion students who, who actually don't, they got much more.
And, and that's understood, but I mean, again, I just understand that, like, the biggest part of my idea was that for, for years, it was something very, very different. For years, it was, now these, any additional costs are incurred by sending district. And that, those are the exact words, additional costs incurred by, by sending district. And this is now, today, I was this, this many days old, when I heard the first slide, that that, that's actually not exactly how it works. So if you understand.
Let's take guys more information. We've already posted the agenda for Thursday night. Um, so maybe I can share information under, under our business and we can talk about it on the twenty-nine. Um, that'd be better, um.
I think, I think probably we should take a little more time. I don't want this rushed.
Send the data, but we just can't. Have a discussion, cause it's the.
Yeah, it might take us longer than two days to pull it together.
This is gonna sound very short sighted, if you go, I don't know. If you give me the mandated education of the superintendent's budget of fifteen million dollars in change. The value of high, four hundred and sixty-eight kids who are in special ed, that equals thirty-two thousand dollars in change. And if you times that by sixty, the school choice fund, one point nine million dollars of that, fine. It's gonna, is, that's how much it's costing us just in special ed alone.
Right, but I think that, that, that is, is kind of swing by the fact that just thirty-four children in out of district placements. Where those costs are exponentially higher than they are for, for housing.
You, you can't just average it out, like, it's not, it, it doesn't, not everybody costs the exact same. Here's somebody who costs whatever, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and if that was a school choice kid, they'll be taken by, by second. It's, it's, it's not an applesauce.
Well, let's look at how many of those kids are inclusion versus specialized programs. Cause specialized program kids have a higher cost due to the intensity of their services. So like, it doesn't, it doesn't, like, I know it's trying to do it, doesn't quite do that because the cost changed depending on.
I just think there are bigger overall picture, when, once we get this data and it's all hung up. When we make, when we say we make two point one million dollars out of school choice, we're not even close to making that much money out of school choice. We're making maybe a few hundred thousand dollars, that's in good.
Because none of those, none of those high costs.
But if you, about the fifteen million, you yank out of the out of district kids. Then divide that number, you get an average, you take the average, times that by sixty of the school choice kids who are coming to the town. That gives you a, again, I know it's not perfect, but it gives you a general number of what you're looking at to educate those students.
Look, look at, um, if you go back to the special education page, tuitions themselves. Are three point seven million and transportation is almost one point eight. So you would have to take those numbers out to even get anything close, and that's, it's still. And then for the transportation piece, it's only worth to considering district as well, yes.
Take percentage, take that number, find it by six. It's perfect, no, but it's going to give you a pretty clear picture on.
So you're taking, I'm not sure I follow what you're doing, so you're taking. Yeah, we are taking, so you're taking the mandated budget. And say, okay, the average of kids costs X. And so we take X out, whatever. Then the remaining number, so we divide that by the two forty-eight, or sixty-eight, sorry, cause it started two thousand. So you're, so again, I would say, like, you're, you're asserting that. But, yeah, exactly, exactly the plan, I, I don't, I don't know.
So it's, what can we know?
Like, if you take the three, three, that's three kids getting the same service for a hundred dollars. So each kid might only be thirty dollars, so you can't assume that it's thirty-two thousand dollars for twenty-one kids.
So the way that, that.
At the building level, when people talk about, they say, so I don't, I say, don't tell me the number, tell me their names. It's one kid can be way more than ten kids. Ten kids, right, the time you spend with one kid could easily be the equivalent of the time you spend with ten kids, so I say, don't tell me the number, tell me the name. Then when I have the names and I know the kid, how much work did I?
And, and I would actually never, like, the, the same value C is, is when we say, okay, whatever our, I don't remember the number, uh, our per student spending. So, so by the same logic, every, every kid costs seventeen thousand, so we're making five thousand, so we actually lose twelve thousand. Yeah, that's not true either. So, they can't, they, they can't just be a, you know, straight, straight division. I think it's, it's probably time to see hard numbers on, on at least the special ed part of it, and I know Jen, we've talked about it, you guys are already in the process of looking at. The, the data across the board on school choice, so that we actually can have a little bit better handle of, hey, here's what we're actually getting out of this. So, and I know it's a big project, cause it's not easy, it's not just a simple, you know. Couple, couple of keystrokes on, on a calculator, but, but, yeah, it's, we gotta, we gotta get to that so quick, so at least.
We'll add it to our agenda for.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can play game members of, of school committee, but also, I mean, if you look in the comments, there's a number of comments about.
There's a lot of comments out there about school choice.
So, I don't think anyone understands this point, uh, and, you know, and I've been doing it for a long time. I, I thought I had a great handle on it, and today I learned something that I did not know.
Alright, so let's, let's do that. Alright, so let's, let's get down to, um. The nitty gritty here. Um, we are lucky enough to get a five percent budget increase. We will still be two point four million dollars for available services.
And, and why are, why are we saying five percent, we're not gonna get five percent.
Well, that's, so. Let me, let me, let me tell you why, though. So that is, you know, we're cutting in truck sales supplies by a hundred thousand dollars, we're eliminating eighty thousand dollars of commercial software. Reallocating, um, some of our custodian salaries, cafeteria voltage. We're going to go from one point nine million of school choice that we're using to two point two.
Spend it down.
And spend it down. Yeah, so it's, um.
Is it, that, that spent it to zero?
No, we still have a little bit of, of, of par there. Um, and that is a reduction of twenty to twenty-three staff members. With a five percent increase. So a four percent increase, we will be two point seven million dollars, uh, we'll have a two point seven million dollar deficit. Of level sentences. We will need to do all of those things that I just talked about, plus add six more staff.
So twenty-six to twenty-five.
And honestly, to get to three percent, I honestly. We're just gonna have to cut more staff, there's nothing else that we can really.
So each, each percentage, it's fair to say each percentage is a top of six? So, we, process will be thirty-two to thirty-five.
So, I mean, we didn't even, we didn't even go, we didn't even go to three, cause I'm like, I, I don't even know, you know. Like, we barely made it to five with all of our crazy math.
But you don't, you understand that three is, is, you know, probably exponentially more like five.
So you're looking at over thirty staff members. Um, and that, so I, I, the following page, I, I wanted us to talk about some options here, um, because we have talked about fees. We have talked about elimination of, of things. Um, we, I also brought back some of the conversations that we had last year in terms of oral language. And our music program and grades toward eighth, um. But, as you can see, none of these things really moved the needle. Um, if we were to increase our athletic fees at the high school, if you increase them to three hundred dollars for every student or for every sport. You're, you have brought in an extra twenty-five thousand. If you increase them to two fifty, to three fifty, you're brought in an extra fifty thousand. We, you know, you know, hockey is always the most expensive sport, um, breaking on Saturday night, that was wonderful, um. If you bring that up to three fifty, it's nineteen hundred dollars, like. It, it's, it's, it's so, same thing for shared, four fifty. Uh, it's so marginal, uh, same thing with the middle school. We can increase the, um, athletic fees to two fifty there, we're bringing in ninety three hundred dollars. Um, if you talk about middle, of the elimination of middle school sports, middle schools clubs, elimination of high school clubs. Um, thirty-three thousand, thirty-eight thousand, fifty-nine thousand.
So when we talk about the elimination of. Sports clubs, that's just the stipend position that goes along with them.
That's transportation that goes along with it, the stipend position.
Kind of like, like, some of the honors, sorry, is if like a fee to join those. So, I guess my other question on a separate topic is where does that fee go, does that go towards the stipend, or does it go towards their pool? Like, I guess.
Typically towards the stipend, and, and if there are, so, definitely if there are dues to belong to a national chapter. That all gets paid at that, out of that student activities now. Yep, so the, um, the amounts are what would be actually coming out of our, our rate target. So we're, assuming we're no longer, we would no longer be taking in. Um, take those fees, but that is what we currently put out for those, for those types of things. I mean, we did a little bit of cutting high school athletics, cause I think we would have a riot on our hands, so we can get that number for you as well. Even the conversation about, um, elimination of oral language at the middle school, like, only our eighth graders take it. Um, it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that you would see there in state.
So with the, with like the one thirty, is that like two or three staff members that are teaching here?
Two staff members.
So hypothetically, if we take out oral language at the, at the middle school. Would those two teachers be included in those twenty positions theoretically?
Yes, yes. So how we wanna get to those twenty, I mean, we have a lot of ideas on how we wanna get there, um. One of the things that we started doing was looking back, um, over the last five years and looking to see what they added. Um, and looking at all your things in those positions that were added that we could remove. Uh, with minimal impact to data Davis students, right, so that's what we started with, right? And we saw that, you know, okay, we can definitely get rid of X or Y, uh, but there are other. Um, positions that were added in the last five years that are really beneficial to the work that we're doing with students. Um, so with some of our extra funds, we added math interventionists at the elementary school. Those teachers are working with small groups individually with students, um, and supporting those foundational skills. In hopes of keeping them off of the IP. The same thing with our reading specialists and reading interventionists. That is our first line of defense for our students, that is how we're able to get in and support them, um, in the small group or one-on-one setting that they need. Those positions, um, have all been added over the last few years, um. The middle school dean set, Mr. Hayward might actually fight somebody, um, if we talk about the middle school dean, because she has made such an incredible. Um, impact on the school and the things that they're able to do here, um, you know, he's like, I would rather give up X, Y, or Z. Than these other positions here. Um, we've also, over time, increased some FTEs in order to give us some more flexibility with scheduling. Uh, we've looked at taking those FTEs and returning them to, um, what we had prior. Um, just, you know, that, there goes our flexibility out the window, um. We also, I want to show you some information here regarding, um, class sizes, so. What we have, this is the average class size that we have right now. Um, this would be if we were to cut, caution positions at the elementary level, um, where we cut, so we've, I mean. This, we've got first grade classes at twenty-six and twenty-seven, with a reduction of, of caution teacher there. We've got, you know, second grade class at twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, we have third grade at twenty-eight. Uh, fourth grade and fifth grade at twenty-six, twenty-seven, those numbers are not what we want to see. Especially for our youngest learners, that's where we know all the foundational skills are built. Um, our principals, most of them are rich men, have been really wonderful about looking at their budgets creatively and saying, you know, I could give up. X, so I could give up Y, um, um, even though it's not able to, 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 to. Um, so. Yeah, Amy's here at the high school, uh, virtually, so, um. I think these are some difficult conversations that we need to have as, um, as a leadership team, as a school committee. Um, in terms of what those, um, positions would be.
Cause we kinda skipped over transportation. Eliminated transportation, except for the things that we need to bus, what does that do?
Um, so that would take us a little bit of time to kind of look at those numbers, so we can certainly do that.
Absolutely, based on the survey, it seems like people don't care.
Yep, well, they also had athletics as pretty well.
So, um, yeah.
Yeah, so it just being the kids that weren't being with.
So it sounds like, uh. Again, I think three percent is far, much more likely scenario. And at three percent, we were talking, uh, twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty, twenty-three. Um, so if, if we look at the budget options, increases, et cetera, if we increase. The, uh, athletic fees of the school of three fifty, not three, you know, then we increase the transportation, but each piece of three twenty-five, not three hundred. And you follow the other things. It's essentially a sort of five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so that's just about three and a half. So, we're still, I mean, we're still looking at twenty to twenty, even if we did all.
Yeah, and so we also have to add in the three hundred thousand in school choice, because, you know, our conversations about what's left, or where that's going to be one. Go all in, um, the hundred and ten thousand dollars in terms of, um. Instructional software, the moving of salaries, that's another hundred thousand dollars there, so for. But a five hundred, that, we're close to a million with those changes. So we would still be looking at, um. You know, probably about fifteen staff members, that's at five percent, so we'd be looking at twenty to twenty-five staff members at that rate.
So, with the reductions. Oh wait, no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm wrong about that. Thirty, thirty-two to thirty-five with three percent, so you're, so you're somewhere in the neighborhood of. Uh, call it twenty-seven to thirty-ish, thirty-one, not, not the, the twenty to twenty-three, so you're like. I mean, the twenty to twenty-three, um, staff reductions is affecting, there's, there's absolutely no way that, that this will be, and let me practice this by, that. That ten people will just stay at home, that. You know, the, the way that these reductions, where this is not, um, this is not to say that that is, is not what you're basically seeing, maybe twenty-three people or whatever it is. Uh, getting things up, if people retire and we don't fill that position, that's, that's the elimination of the, of the position. Even if the typical person go, resignations, right, so, I mean, just keep in mind, but.
Yes, in places that we're able to not backfill those positions, we will certainly do that. Um, we have a few retirements that have already been, um, turned in, those savings are already present in the twelve percent. Um, increase that you've seen, anything that we're perceived after that, we're kind of holding on to it.
So, resignations. Retirements aren't, we can't bank on those helping us at all, essentially.
It's, it's very minimal, it, 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 it's, it's going to be, so if we have a teacher that retires and they're making ninety thousand dollars, we can. Maybe backfill them with somebody. Yes, so it, 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 it all depends on the, on the, on the position, so. You know.
So essentially, those aren't gonna move the needle by.
Not the way we, not, not in a two point four million dollar way. So, I mean, unfortunately, when the, when the deficit is four hundred thousand dollars. Those types of things, like retirements, resignations, um, move the needle a little bit more. It's very difficult to say, oh, these four or five things are going to help us with this, you know, multi-million dollar deficit.
So. If we're handing out. Or, I don't wanna say handing out, if we're reducing staff by, call it twenty. How does that then project onto the town budget, because assuming they'll be collecting unemployment. And what can they start collecting on?
They can start collecting unemployment, currently we are scheduled to do it June twelfth, they're able to start collecting on June thirteenth.
At minimum, they could collect for the whole summer while they're.
Correct, um, there is, depending, you know, we have, did this a few years ago, the insurance.
Yeah, I would, I would say we would, we would have to go out.
So, I mean, we would have to really look at who are the people that are being laid off. What do they get for insurance, like, we would have to, some of them don't take insurance because they have it, um, through family. Um, so that would be, be something. Um, so that would be something we wouldn't know until um further down the road. I also think it's really important that, um, last year we heard a lot from the community that they were. Very upset that we were talking about music and word language and everything, um, at one of our, you know, late spring meetings.
When the budget was already done.
Yes, however, you know. This year was to be very clear about what what the problem is.
So now we're talking about it early and we're gonna have the same type of year. So for those of you listening at home, on February sixth, twenty twenty four. We're looking at twenty positions being eliminated. Unholy, yeah. Either way, people can't come to us in June and say, well, I wanna save so and so's job like they did last year. That's the unfortunate thing about a budget. Well, my next question. When we're reducing staff. What does that process look like as far as is is there anybody that's protected and anybody that's tenured or? Or can you just, you know, say, you're gone, or how does that work?
So contractually, um, we have a security list for all of our teachers, um, which, um. Relies on length of service, also licensing, what they are qualified to teach. Um, so what we'll do is we'll look first at positions and say, okay, um, we think that we can. Do without this position, that person, depending on their length of time in the district, now has the ability to bump someone else. Um, so really, you don't lose those high salaries, you lose the salaries that are, um. Poor beginning teacher, mid-level teacher, but when you're cutting that deep, when you're looking at twenty five. Plus staff members, it it can get very deep. Um, so we're going to be looking, we're looking at ways that we can redesign schedules to, um. Enhance efficiency, we're looking at ways that we can um redesign departments. Um, to see if there are ways that we can free up something, um, we are, I mean, it's it's really. Anything is on the table at this point, because it has to be.
Now, clarification on that. That's strictly what we're dealing with.
Correct.
If we say. If we wanna cut the business manager out, she can't bump someone else, correct? Then second piece of that. And then second part of that. Hypothetically, we eliminate position A at the high school also. If that person doesn't have a teaching license, we can't go and bump a third grade teacher, correct? But we like looks like. But like the situation we had last year where. Like I can't remember an instructional specialist we have at the high school level, even though you might have fifteen years here, we can cut that position out. Somebody that they're certified.
Only they're certified for that position, right?
At the high school level, that makes it a little. I thought it's in our favor, we don't want to be cutting positions, but in our favor that you only generally speaking. Have that subject that you can teach in St. Massachusetts, there are multiple teachers we have, you could teach English or science or whatever, generally. They cut an English teacher, they're usually not bumping down to the mass.
So we do see times where they go back and forth between the middle school and the high school, right? So that. That's how licensure goes, same thing with the ele- at the elementary, like typically eight to five, one to six.
Is is there is there certification for professional degree for uh grade level as well? So.
Yes, so.
So if you're an English teacher at a high school, you may not be uh certified to teach English at.
At the middle school, you may or may not, it depends.
But just to kind of expand on what you're saying, like. A person in the high school may not be able to go to the.
If they do not have the.
Even in the same subject. So strategically. Those tend to suck, we could look at those positions as well.
Like classroom positions?
No, it was like those ones that were like this teacher can't go anywhere else, we aren't making ninety thousand dollars and doing it. Not so much a teacher deciding to just really work that way.
I think the best way to probably start is to look at what makes sense for students. And so, um, we have to look at that, um, we have done so much work. Over the last few years and building our capacity and putting systems and structures in place to support. General education, right? So looking at, um, the interventionists, looking at the coaches that we have. Because we're trying to solve a special education problem. And you can't solve a special education problem unless you solve a general education problem. And so those positions we've done, you take those things away. And we're back to in the same situation.
And I think it's important to note that the majority of anything we're talking about is on the general education side of the budget.
There are very limited positions in special education where we could cut. Are we looking at schedules and caseloads and all of those things to see if we do have some space? Yes. Can I promise that I say I'm willing to cut this special education position? Next week, and then we don't have to reinstate it because of student need down the road? I I can't.
So one thing you might see next, um, so if. If we were to cut and it gets bumped down to the the lowest paying teachers. I I'm guessing on human nature, but if you cut, you know, twenty five, thirty positions, it's likely that that next tier. Is dusting off their resume that day, and and you probably will see some defections. And then we can backfill what the teacher previously had with the low paying teachers, so that, you know, I, there's no way to quantify that number. But but that's another. callbacks versus, you know. But but sorry, I'm sorry, but but. The other thing is that some of those callbacks might say, well, you're just gonna come in next year, so I'm just gonna, I'm not. If if a teacher. If a teacher is reduced this year, and then we do call it back, do they get all their like seniority still? Or is it, are they starting essentially back at square?
It depends on. Teacher and where they were senior, like, they if they get recalled. They would go back to their.
Which is probably on like.
Right, um, anyone who is non-professional status, so teaching to them for three years, they're still not professional status. Um, but you know, our principals are here, I mean, they are here tonight and, um, Eric's here too and. I don't know if you guys wanna ask them any questions specific about programs or concerns that they have about, um, these drastic cuts.
I think one of the things that everyone has to realize, and I think where we need to start, and I think. Try to say as nice as possible without having. This is a problem. That didn't start now, okay, we all know that, this is a problem that we have started from. Fifteen years ago, we get grant, we fund those positions, we get the grant money, we get the grant money, yeah, 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 it's all about, no need to worry about that person into our. That's what happens, that's what we've always done, we look at it as level services, but we take the grant money, if grant money runs out, we fund the position. How many grants have we done over the last ten years that have professional now employees working? If I bet that number is rather high, so what happens is is it keeps compounding. And what happens unfortunately is we try to do level services, we need a little raise here, we do this from fourteen to fifty, fifteen to sixteen, oh, fiscal close coming, fiscal close coming. But instead of what we did unfortunately, we kept kicking the can down the road. Now, instead of taking fifty thousand dollars in fourteen, a hundred thousand dollars in fifteen, two hundred thousand dollars in sixteen. We went, let's general onto one thing and I worked two two point four million dollars short. And personally, I think that was done on purpose from your predecessor, but might make an analogy there. But I think that was done on purpose for a long reason, a long reason only. He wanted the offer, and that's where he knew that by doing this, by compounding on interest, by combining these positions, by doing it. It puts a two point four million dollars in front of us, and now we're the people who are gonna say, well, now I gotta cut thirty positions. Instead, if we did it a little smarter and projected and said, hey, listen, let's not put ourselves in that spot, I think this was done intentionally. Personally, I also think we are now going to be the people who are looking at this saying, alright, we're gonna cut thirty positions, we're gonna have the town completely mad at us. You're gonna catch a ton of heat in your first year when it had nothing to do with you. I'm not sure I follow your logic, are you, are you saying that we shouldn't have taken the grants originally? No, saying those positions have a grant funded, we should have been cutting those positions as soon as we knew, hey, you know what, we still, we. We can't fund it this year, we're just gonna absorb it into the budget. Did we get another, how many, how many grants, professional positions that we've got over the last ten years?
Okay, so I can give you ten years, but I can give you the last few years, so last year we added. It was it's not full position, so we added one, two, three, four positions, um. That was a health teacher, which we need to support our English language students to our special education. Teachers, and then we increased people by small percentages, all sorts.
Give or take probably a hundred and seventy five kick.
Uh, all special education, so it's.
So it's in the mandated.
So we.
Yeah.
I can't get rid of any of that, um, the year before that, twenty two, twenty three. No, not by a grant, so this, I'm just saying like, what have we added, right, these last few years, what have we added?
Yeah, but I don't, that's all right.
From grants. So I actually think it would not be a lot, I actually think it would be much less than you're thinking. Um.
Well, cause I mean historically, the grants.
So like.
Like when you used to write the grants, they were almost recurring and then we have a change at the federal level.
And those same people have been.
And if we take a.
In those positions for years.
And and I'm not gonna speak for you, but if we look at, say, what we added with the S R funds. For example, if that's two positions, then to Nick's point, that's two positions that we didn't have enough.
So with S R grants, we added two extra nurses. We, which one has already been cut, we added the three math interventionists and the reading intervention.
So that that was a very recent, that that's a issue, just just happened. With a longer term, with a longer term grants, that may have been recurring and then stopped recurring and we drove it to the budget. You you're discounting that at that time, when we absorbed it into the budget, it's it's. Very possible, and in some cases it's very probable, that we cut someone else to absorb it, because we said this position is more important than that position. So it's it's not just a simple, every year we just added more positions into our budget, and now we have to cut twenty three, since we have a super close to twenty three people. Like, there there have been decisions made every single year about what we need and don't need. And we're we're at, we're at a position right now, where, you know, I mean theoretically. We have what we need to educate our kids, at least at the basis level, but the funding is not gonna support that, so I I'm. I'm not sure I I agree with your premise, like it it's, it's not, it's not simply in a bubble. Grants come in, grants go away, and that's, that just is a straight line, there are other, there are other factors, but. You know, we we lose the whatever, a hundred thousand dollar grant to fund a hundred thousand dollars of teachers. And we say, well, we allowed it on the budget, we may have in fact cut a hundred thousand from somewhat, not necessarily teachers, some. Or we may say, or they absorb that into, you know, school choice. I mean, prior, prior to this, I I cut a health teacher in the middle of an opioid crisis during last decade. I cut world language in the specials program, I cut two E L A teachers out of the middle school, so a year worth of. English education from six, eighth grade cut, I cut two math teachers. Got transformed into world language teachers for grade seven, cut those, cut a reading specialist. And cut a secretary prior to this, all from like two thousand nineteen, so. We've cut E L, two E L A teachers, a a year worth of English education from six to eight out of this program, change the schedule. We're pretty much have the hay, we pretty much have their schedule at the middle school, they have their homerooms, I have eight subjects, I have eight classes. We're pretty much to bone at this point, so during that time, it hasn't been all additions. We cut a health teacher to do something else, or we cut, you know, cut, we used to have eight specialists, now we have six. And that number could shrink even more, so there's been cuts along the way in favor of other things. Again, I'm shocked with declining schools that we cut E L A, I'm shocked that we cut math teachers in favor of world languages at the time. But then we ended up cutting those on top of that, I'm shocked that, again, during an opioid crisis, we cut a health teacher, but we did all those things. Barely a ripple, barely a thing, so I mean, there have been cuts along the way.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to say that this was done intentionally, um. And, you know, listen, you and I agree to disagree, and still walk down here being friends all the time, but. I don't think that's fair at all, and you have three people sitting in seats who have been doing this for nine years, ten, eleven years, fifteen years, that you're accusing us of. Well, you you are, because I've been sitting in this seat for nine years, right? So. So you are when you say things like that, and you have to remember like what everybody else is saying. We did the best that we could with the information that we had with the changing needs of our students, general ed, specialized, whatever it is. We've done the best that we can to provide what we think is necessary for our students. That that's, you know, thi- this, these decisions are not made lightly, they're not made politically, they're made because we genuinely care about our students. Period, so we've done what we did because we thought that was in the best needs of our students. And and like Vinnie just said, things were cut, we we chose directions because we thought that was best for our students. That's how we've done this.
And I think, I think the other part of that too is, you know, those of us that have been here, you know, for a few years. You know, the needs from a few years ago are drastically different for this year. You know, like, we didn't have, like, when I started, we didn't have as many specialized programs, we didn't have a lot of the added district costs, I mean. And it's just, like, I can say, you know, in my time, this is the worst budget I've seen. And, you know, but then you look at, what have we done, what what could we have done different? Last year to year before it, you know, quite frankly, we're used to not getting what we quote unquote need. You know, we we've never gone, you know, really nearly with, we need, you know. X, Y, and Z, I need to, you know, gold-rimmed, you know. Basketball hoops, I mean, we've always been fairly mean with our budgets, um, you know, we. We've been accused of a of a variety of things over the years, from hiding money to finding money, um, you know, and. The numbers are what they are, that's just the bottom, that's the nature of what this budget is, these are the numbers. We could, you know, we could raise fees higher than what's on this sheet, I'm not gonna put a dent in it, you know, i- it's just. This is the reality of, you know, where we're at as a school district, we can say that's, this is the reality of where we're at as a town. Don't wanna hear that either, this is just the nature of, here you go. Doing it what you can, and we've had to be, we've been creative in the past, there was a year that. You know, the one that comes to mind is when we outsourced food services, um, but I mean, we've had. We're not adding, we've never added a ton of positions in my time here, you know, a lot of it was, you know. Point five to point seven or point three to point five, but, you know, there's not, has not been a ton of new positions that people think. That are out there, we've had a lot of internal candidates, you know, quite a bit, uh, but. So a- and I look at, you know, like one position we lost, it's really kinda hurt us with the communications position. No offense to the leadership team, but there's less getting out there, because someone doesn't have the time, because we don't have someone dedicated to do that. If you took two thousand thirteen, so two thousand fourteen. How many teachers were there on thirteen, how many, how many maintenance people, how many coaches, how many whatever? And you can tell it now, you're gonna tell me this is not.
I would have to look through the numbers, I I mean, I can also say, for example, we would have to look at where the numbers. At what the positions were, at one time, I was one of ten second grade teachers at J C S, ten. There's only five there now, right? So. There have definitely been changes and cuts and and things like that, if we wanna look at the positions that have been added, we also have to look at the positions that. And I can do that, I can pull that together, if you guys wanna do ten years, do ten years, you wanna do five years, I already have the five year positions that have been added.
If if we're level across the board, and our enrollment has been going down by seven percent, that we saw on the papers, our test scores are going down. What are we doing? No, thanks, but like. We're adding more teachers, more specialists, more this, more that, more blah, 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 more, 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 we see, we just saw the news. They're adding more, more money, more, 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 test score is going down, and run is going down, what are we doing? What are we doing wrong? So I would, I would say, what I would, what I would look at, if I were you, is look at, you know. Our mandated and our general, and see how those are, how those are trending. And that actually has to be factored into. And it it almost doesn't have to be factored in, it's pretty much the answer, so if you say, well, how many teachers do we have today? If we had, say, a conversation, a hundred teachers in two thousand fourteen, and the split was.
Say a conversation, a hundred teachers in two thousand fourteen, and the split was thirty sped and seventy general. And now we have a hundred teachers, but it's seventy sped, thirty general. Well, I can tell you why our score is going down, because we were from seventy teachers to thirty teachers, but now we still have a hundred, well, don't. We have, we have thirty teaching the general education. You know, that's, that's. Right, yeah, maybe get into how many general and how many special, and do that chart as well, because again, you're gonna see specialty coming. Obviously, it can actually meet a question. So that's, but, but that's, but that's the answer to your question, your question is, what's the change in teachers, and, and my, my point is. You may not see a drastic change in teachers, the question is, what those teachers teach? And if the, if the general, if your general sixth grade. Or, sorry, your general, what were you? Second grade teacher had ten in.
Oh gosh, I'm gonna think about this, uh, we had ten second grade teachers at J C S in twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, and now they have five in twenty twenty-four, I mean, that's, you know. If you're sad, there, there's, there's, I think, the answer to what you're, what you're driving at, is just, yeah. Yeah, we, we are adding, you're adding some teachers, but we're cutting other teachers, and it's the same thing with the grant, and we say, listen, at some point. Eh, not at some point, eh, every year, every year, you have to sit down and say, okay. What are our priorities, and if, if there are certain things that are mandated, well, they become a priority. And then with the residual, you say, okay, during opioid crisis, a health teacher versus E L A or whatever. Well, unfortunately, the health teacher is, is not gonna be our priority, and we're gonna cut that position, so.
I, I keep having everyone talk about special ed mandates. Where are, where are general ed man- mandates, I don't know about the other schools, but my school. I'm mandated to teach English to all the kids, not social studies and science. That's the entire schedule for a middle school kid. Then I give them gym, art, music, tech ed, and STEM. Contractually, I'm mandated, because I get to give the teachers a prep. So those kids need to go somewhere, buy my math and. So everyone's talking spec- special ed mandates, I have mandates, I have to teach math. I'm not cutting teachers, once you get above sixth grade, I have to cut programming, it's never about people. It's, what do you wanna cut, do you wanna cut social studies? I have, there's nothing left, I have to teach English, math, social studies, science, that is the entire schedule. We don't do course selection at the middle school, you get a middle school program. Our program now is math, social studies, science, and English. That's it, n- nothing else, no left, nothing. Then they have specials mandated by the contractor, they have to provide those other teachers prep, they have to have the kids go somewhere. They used to be eight, those kids were spread out over eight different things, and they had variety. It's now it's six, potentially five. So, I mean, it's, we're pretty much at man- at like, these are mandated things, even though it's general ed, it's.
There's nothing left to cut.
There's not much left, left to cut, the other thing is that. During COVID. Uh, you know, the teachers union was here, everyone's here, we're heaven and earth to get politicians and money to do X, Y, and Z. Well, the kids are in COVID right now. COVID for that, the bad part of COVID wasn't the sickness for them, they rarely got sick and didn't bounce back. This is COVID right now for them, because this is them coming back from all that interrupted education. Anyone here advocating for money, anyone put, pushing politicians to get money? Anyone saying the crisis is now? For me, the COVID crisis is right now, not when everyone was home, that was a, I didn't have school dances to attend, I didn't have. No night meetings. The COVID, the COVID crisis is right now, so why is schools dropping? Cause we're not dealing with the crisis, no one's advocating for money. Five thousand dollar, what does local school committee is doing to say five thousand dollars is a ridiculous reimbursement for school choice? Absolutely ridiculous, that number. It, probably the same number for over ten years. It hasn't moved up at all, that's ridiculous, so what are people doing to say? You don't get to export your problem to other districts, and then do we have a cutoff date? I think we do in October for people to come, but, like, those are, that's the long game, so those are your associations, superintendent associations. But we're gen- generalized, at this point, have mandates, there's not much left to cut.
So, I, I shouldn't, I shouldn't say this, but well, uh. Unfortunately, the, the, you're right, that you, generally it has mandates. Uh, and. The reality of this is that the cuts will come in the form of quality. That's, that's what it will be. And, and it shouldn't be, like. We're dealing with our realities today, not, not fantasy worlds, and, and the cut will come in quality. And that's the reality. So, it shouldn't be, but it is. What do you, what do you mean by quality? Well, I mean, we can, we can't not teach English, but if your average class size is twenty. Tomorrow it's forty, because we cut half the English teachers. I mean, you can't teach forty as well as twenty, that's time. So, that's, that's our obvious structure.
Well, in some cases, I can't, I wish I, I mean, that would be good if I could do that, and as I cut a teacher and everything would go up just a little bit more, and we spread them out. You can't even really do that, because I have to offer programs, because the teachers. Are by co- are certified.
I'm using that as an example, so, that's how we're gonna start to.
In, in an elementary model, you can go, okay, I've got eight class, I'm gonna cut to seven, everyone's gonna get a few more, I can't do that, it's either cut the program. Or not, either we operate or we don't. Uh, that makes it tough. Um, you know, as far as like fees and the caps, like, I don't know, I mean, I think the fee should go up a lot, I don't think there should be any cap. I, I, I know, it's hard to budget when we have caps, I have no idea, we have some programs that don't bring in. Nearly what they should, I have a drama program, a lot of the, it's huge, a huge program. A lot of the kids are there for free, because they've already hit the cap.
So, I mean, that's something certainly we wanna work at, um. And, and I'm not saying that we're not going to, uh. However, unfortunately, also, I point out that it's, it's a lot like. You know, digging under your couch cushion for nickels to pay it work, it's like, it's, it. It just doesn't. Make a big dent, and, but, not to say that that's absolutely not on the table, because it is. Uh, but, you know, we have to be realistic about what we can actually bring in that way. You might be able to bring in another three hundred thousand maybe before you start.
And then it's, and then it's people, and, and that's really, that's the difficult part, and I think. Now, respectively. To your, your point, there's really nothing left for us to cut, like, we don't have a lot of excess. And when it comes to general education, like, we, we've kind of. At the point where we're cut off, if you have other positions, yes, will we cut them, yes. Do we want to? No, because those are some of the things that are saving, uh, a lot of our students right now. But ultimately, I don't know how you find third staffs.
I, I will say, I, and. You're gonna be shocked, it says, we should. Take school choice to zero. I mean, just use the provisions now, and. What, what are we doing, you know, whether I'm not using that, that. Save the people now, lose them next year, or, or.
I, I, I think one of the things that, um. We'll do whatever the committee, you know, really feels like we should do. One of my concerns is like, if we're cutting middle school sports and middle school clubs and, you know, all these other things. I think we're going to see our school choice families leave. And so therefore, back when we brought in one point six million dollars this year. It's not gonna matter, because that number is going to reduce. And it might be one fell swoop, might be a little bit ever here, but. You know, you come to a district, you choose to go to a district, because you want what they have.
And, I, I don't. I understand what you're saying, and I agree with that a lot, I don't know, it's, it's not too.
Yeah, but we're gonna rely on.
Right, it is.
Text them out next year.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I mean. Again, I feel like saving it so that we can. You know, we can cut those teachers next year, so this year, I, I think that's. Makes a lot of sense, I, I don't know. Well, I, I mean, I think the problem with that is, if we don't use everything we have now. You know. As, as next to, we've kicked it down the road. If, if we have to do, we're already making hard decisions, but maybe we can save. We positions, if we zero on school choice. Like twenty-seven better than thirty. You know, I mean, we have to, and, and.
Well, let's look at busing, let's see what that does, you know, that, what, what number does that bring? We, we have to look at everything at this point, the town has once again spoken with the lack. Of people in this audience or online, they've spoken again. So we'll do what they want, well, we haven't really done that before, so let's do it.
Looking at this survey though, at what is supposed to be the least. I mean, the, the lowest one, like. I know you didn't put any numbers on there, but I can imagine that some of these high school teams are.
So, you wanna be a little bit careful about assuming that it's the lowest, they didn't. They respawed it, it's gonna be the lowest, because only. Two schools, but really one school cares about it, so the J C S parents are like, yeah, I don't like it.
Well, I guess what, I don't, like, I don't have an idea on like. All of the athletics in the high school, but what? Like, what's the, like, how many kids are on the swim team, or how many?
So, you're gonna see, what are you gonna see, you cut that, and even middle school athletics? You're gonna see the mental health crisis get even worse with these kids, you're gonna see behaviors become even worse with these kids, because they have no outlet. You, you have to remember, and I know you wanna compare ten years ago to now, we can't, the world is very different from ten years ago. Their parental influence is very different, the consequences for behavior is very different.
But that's, but, sure, I agree, we, we've tried to talk about multiple times, parenting is the problem. Of, of the last ten years. But, but we also do the same stuff. By making decisions, you know, of, of what we do, we've said multiple times, oh, are, are we doing too easy, are we doing this? You know, we have policies that, whether we try to write up, or the high school tries to write, write up, and we always kinda take like the. We might, they might make some of that, the cell phone one's great, yeah, you know, well, take our cell phones away, well, no, we don't wanna take them away from everybody, but. Are we, are we, that's hopefully feeding into some of this stuff too.
I think we keep looking at the student, I know I do at least. But my, my main concern is the student. That is my main concern with every decision that I make.
The, the athletics, while Aaron will give you a number on how many kids are involved, per season, per sport, everything else. When I have middle school basketball, there's fifteen kids on the boys, fifteen on the girls. There's eighty-five, the other day, there was a hundred kids in the stand. Athletics serve more than just the athletes, and serve the whole culture and climate, making kids feel belonging to the school. So, it's all the kids in the fan, and that show up. I see Peter Wiggins flashing out his coaches entities, like the old kids streaming down from the stand, it's a lot more than just the athletes. That benefit from having an athletic program. And so it's going to impact more than that, uh, do I think those fees should go up, yeah, probably. Do I think those parents will get sick of carrying the burden? For all these other people who get to benefit from the sports program that don't pay the fees, yeah, maybe those become voters that support us. Because they won't wanna shoulder the burden all by themselves, the district that came from before here, before here. Didn't have busing for any one of both grades six. Zero buses. Cause that's how bad it got. Uh, so it gets that bad, yeah, zero buses, where was that? Over. Where was Joel? He was the superintendent, I was his principal.
It was, yeah, he, Mr. Unis was the town manager. Interesting, right?
I'm not saying to like cut athletes, but I'm just saying, like, maybe if we put these numbers out there, like, we don't have a pool. So I'm sure we have to pay to use a pool, we don't have a hockey rink, I'm sure we're paying. So I'm just saying, like, if we put the numbers there, like, that's a huge part of the athletics budget, I would think, no, like renting facilities? And maybe I'm like way off base here, but.
All of those fees come out of revolve.
So.
But we don't budget for the ice rink, for the swim, like, any capital budget. All comes from these.
So what?
So, the, the, so, so the three, what is it, two, three hundred per student, if we were to increase it, that covers. The rentals or whatever it is.
That pays how any rental that I pay, that would revolve. Not the student, I did, not the student, but, but by revolve, and you mean the fees. Yes, but you're, but.
Yeah, so.
Correct, correct me if I'm wrong, right, because on that list, on our list. Athletics in general, I'm making this, not, not making this number up, but somewhere close, it's like about six hundred thousand dollars, give or take. So, if we have a six hundred thousand dollar athletic budget, and off the fees, we make how much, two hundred and fifty thousand? The amount, if we were cutting all sports, would be somewhere around three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars savings. Yeah, sure, and appeal, absolutely not, to Sherry's point, we're gonna be looking at a real issue.
The odds we would get if we don't have after school activities, we get them now, and it's a minimal amount. Of kids when they, you know, leave one school, but on the other.
Let's face the facts here, I mean, I'm in athletics, college athletics, it's a little different. We don't cut athletics, you think. I mean, you were talking an outlet, you're talking kids who are in school simply because, and getting at least the same, the same in the sports. I mean, you're talking a whole, but now, to Justine's point. Do we look at those teams that are, you know, possibly costing us a lot more than, let's say, cross country? Because, you know, it's gonna be a cheap spot, they're running on our, whatever, how much is hockey costing us, you know, that might be a, you know. I do wanna share one thing. Cause everybody always gets on the, the sports that are somewhere else, the swim, the hockey. We're never gonna build a million dollar hockey rink, we're never gonna build a million dollar pool.
We're never gonna build a three million dollar Randy Lewis Center.
Yeah, so. Like track, just gotta brand new track. For wall across, baseball, softball, they just got brand new fields. Soccer got brand new fields, and it's got brand new tennis courts, so we have to be careful. When we say that those are expensive, they're expensive annually. But over the course of time, we're not maintaining those facilities.
Well, I mean, I think, look at these, all the years we've talked about fees. There's no amount of fees that cover, no. That particular area, well, no, there is, if you took six hundred thousand dollars, figure out how much. How many students we have in high school sports, to factor that out, and say, everyone owes us seven hundred and fifty dollars per sport.
Don't even remember how many years ago that was. It, it was, you know, I remember fifteen hundred dollars was like, I think.
That was girls, uh, I thought girls' basketball was the most.
Was it because, uh, there was just so few girls on the team?
I, I, I believe, I remember his, that shared with me.
Yeah, I believe if there were, if there were not, no programs, there might have been one program that was actually not a cost. Everything, everything is a cost, uh, and, and so. Back then, the thought process was not, well, we'll just take the cost, and now within the day, it was more, okay, well, we're gonna take the cost, and. If you wanna play sport X, you'll pay the cost of sport X, and that's what it is, so. Which, I mean, you can, you do, uh, it gets a little slippery, because when you say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna pay to play it. Uh, just to say the conversation, girls' basketball is eighteen hundred dollars per student to play. You're gonna have, I don't know, number's fifteen, you're gonna have thirteen kids who are saying, well, I, I not playing basketball, so. That, that's look fierce, which. I mean, it's, you know, and listen, I, I.
Well, the merit of promise is gonna be very good, because.
I agree with that, when basketball goes, you gotta figure out. So, so, then, then it's, oh, we have, you know, you can't have, not, picking on anyone here, but you can't have seventeen men's sports and three women's, because the women's side, and the backside.
Let me be very, very clear, like, I, I, on a, on a real fundamental basis, I, I agree exactly what you're saying, like. The reality is, we have to make choices here, this is, we can't not make choices, because they're hard. It's, it's unfortunate, but that is the job we have, you know, so. I, I think, in the end, I think everything has to be on the table, you know, I think, but I just wanna be cognizant of, like, okay. If, if we cut this, and it's, it's kinda, it goes back to the whole premise of like, when we, when we absorbed the, um. The grants, and we said, okay, we made a choice, because this is more important than that. If, if we're cutting something, we're all looking to say, okay, holistically, that is less important than something we're not cutting. And, and that's, that's why I'm very cautious about some of those sports, where, I mean, not only is it, is it important to keep some of these kids in school. There are, there are kids who may not, you know, they may not go off to the D one level, play a sport. But it's absolutely gonna be a factor in them getting into schools, or, you know, staying in here, uh, and, and getting grades good enough to get them into a school, so. That, you know, the holistic view is a little bit more complicated than just simply the money is, you know, it's this, so.
And I think, I can tell you from experience, my grades went down, I lost their fall, which typically the winner got the sport.
But we have to be careful, just always talking about sports, right, there's kids that are in the drama, and, 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 we have to be very careful. And, and again, here's, here's the problem, right, we're still, we're still looking at all these things that affect kids. And it's the five of us that are gonna sit in these seats and devastate kids, they will come out in droves crying, parents will be angry, but yet tonight. Nothing, nothing. You're eight.
Uh, there's twenty on. It's great.
Question. I'm just gonna hold it, can't watch.
Yes.
We know the state makes mandates, and unfund. We have a lot of unfunded. We we have mandates at state says, here, you gotta do X, Y, and Z, and you get zero dollars for it. Make it work.
Yeah.
What happens if we say, we don't have funding for that, so therefore we can't do it?
Um, I think it probably depends on what the mandate itself is. Um, but we would probably get fined, we might go into receivership. It it depends on what it is, like, what 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 mandate cannot.
You actually can, you can, you can lose, depending on what it is, like, like say.
You're all in your fund.
Like you can actually lose your federal funding.
Has anyone ever lost fun?
Yeah, there is some, there is some, uh, school systems, I believe, John, you might know more about the stupid. That are in receivership or have been in receivership, who have lost some of their funding, and they've been taken over. Springfield.
Sure, getting at, do you actually think that if we, the, the community said, if we are not funding this, what are you going to do to us?
Okay.
Yeah.
There's, plus again, if you don't follow the statutes, that they will remove funding. And they won't say to you that, well, I'm sorry that it's your, your budget, this is a mandated process as part of.
Yeah.
Being an educational anti.
And what funding would they be removing? Thirty dollars per kid?
Um, so all of our entitlement grants that, um, so like the seven hundred and something thousand dollars for special education, all the title grants. Um, those would be the first to go. Um, and then, I mean, they can come in and and force you to do. Basically, they're.
And and I would, I would say if it's a nice suburban district like ours, they would make an example of us real fast.
Because right now, the the federal government is going after, uh, the Department of Education in Massachusetts around some of these things. So they're gonna come down to. And I'm just being, just.
And and I think too, like, the amount of children now to follow mandates. Is unbelievable at a full-time job. Never mind. Dealing with the state, cuz we're not getting.
And it's, it's important to keep in mind too, that they consider us, uh, you know, able to. And so. If we said, well, we can't. Fuck it, hit our budget, even though I I know our budget is, we can't. They would say, yeah, you can. You just need to pass that over, right? And if you guys can afford it, so.
I actually wonder if the school, if the Department of Education would actually go to the town like Holbrook municipality.
That's what, that's what'd be my point.
Right, like, I I, but I think it would be, I think it would be all of it, I I, yeah, I think it would be. But when you decide, well, maybe you want, you want, oh. Set of things that are going down.
I get, I get the fuss though. I mean, it's, it's.
What gets to our point, where like, Norm's not gonna, we're not the only town that has this issue. We're, we're seeing it across rich communities such as New Haven. We're seeing it across a lot of towns and districts in in Massachusetts. Does it just take one, and then people start going, you know, hey, this is what we're doing, hey, we're coming on too. I don't know, I don't know. I'm just. It gets to a point where someone, I'm gonna mandate you to. Put flowers at your house, and you're like, I don't have money to do it all. Well, the town's gonna come in, it's like, at some point. Gotta be like ours, it's enough of enough.
But I would, I would caution you against being the guy charging the hill saying, let's go. And you turn around, there's no way.
But some of these mandates, if we don't follow, even though, let's say, you guys are the ones who say to us, you're not following them. We're the ones who's in our license.
Yeah, right, right.
So like, not just us, it's some of our teachers, right? So. Now we're gonna have a situation where, you know, people are. I I'm twenty-five years in, or I'm four years in, and I just got my license, and I'm not staying in North because right now, there's. We're not in the place where, well, yeah, maybe we all will be in a few years, things other towns do. But right now, there's more jobs for our teachers to go to. Right, then there are, you know, so there's always, like, right now. They do not have to stay. And I don't know the legal limitations of receivership, but I I'm very certain that. When they come in and and take us over, the school committee gets absolved right away.
Yeah.
And then they say.
So they, 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 you know, the next thing they do after absolving them, or anywhere in the school committee is they say. That unfunded mandate that they weren't funding will not be funded. And and so what would happen is it would, it would take control of the, of the district, await the district, and in the end. It would just do exactly what they wanted to do in the first place, so.
Districts in receivership don't have any autonomy over local based decisions. They're all, they're all run from from the state. Es- essentially, so.
For your kids. Our heads would explode.
Well, yeah, yeah. We do have local control over certain, yeah, so wanna make sure that you can maintain that. Same thing, um, if, you know, we've always talked about. And to that point where the state is just coming in and providing additional support, so we lose a lot of that. And so it all, it seems like we don't have a lot. It's a lot lost.
I think I know this was near dear year marks, I think this is probably what that interested us, but when it comes to like masks. We were, okay, no, but we had, we had, we were on the front line of of. Going away from that policy and going to a more, uh, you know, more adaptable policy. The state would have been last. So you don't wanna lose that control, where you can say, hey, listen, this is something that we really feel strongly about. We feel this is best for our community. And that's the way we wanna go. I I wanna, and I know this is, you're talking hypothetical, you're talking about not doing these things, but, but. You know, listen, I mean, they they kinda have us over barrel a little bit, and and so. While while it starts to talk about hypotheticals and 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 starting a revolution, and I think that that there there's, I think that there is. There is a conversation to be had about how we change this stuff, because I've been kinda hitting on it before, like, where's the, where's the outrage? You know, where's it coming from? Where is, where is the, you know, school choice funding? Why isn't that going, you know, it's a ten thousand, which probably should be. You know, that, that's a conversation that we absolutely wanna have. Um, at this point, we have to kind of put on the middle burner, not not necessarily the back burner. The reality is, right now, we have a, a, a world crisis in in our district. And at some point, we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. I, I don't see a situation where we don't lose that, that kind of positions. Uh, and and that would be true even if we cut sports and did a couple other things, I still know it was.
And I guess what I think the next piece of this too, is looking forward after this year, you have a teacher's contract, that's up. What is that? Like, it's just, I feel like we're never. Gonna get ahead until we can figure out what we're gonna do, I guess, I mean, you know. How's the teachers, the teachers are gonna look at this and do a new cut, early position. We are now that, like, we're gonna be in the slot of how, how are we gonna negotiate a new contract? When we just had the biggest cut that they, they received.
Very carefully.
Yeah.
That's how we're gonna shake it.
And that's, you're a hundred percent right.
And and Dinesh is right, cuz I saw this in my practice, but. Once you get close to people, they stop looking and then it gets offset cuz you lose people, and then you have to hire at the bottom, cuz. Superintendent stat table people, you can hire, but it can only be step this or step that, so you don't get quality people. You get the best person at this price, and that kind of floats it for a little bit, but the pain in the correction is through some type of override eventually. Because eventually you can't even do that. But but that's, that will happen, you'll lose good people. And then your district's less desirable, the programs you offer are fewer and fewer, but eventually they ask to come a correction. Eventually in Holbrook, they had only up and built an entire K to twelve school. After finding it, for years, they had built a K to twelve compa. And, uh, you know, there had to be a correction of this, because you're right, what happens the year after? The year after, we don't just lose the people at the bottom of the seniority list, use quality people who say, I'm not gonna do this yearly year. I'm not gonna get to step ten or twelve there, because then I might be un-hireable anywhere else. I'm gonna leave now. I've got eight years' experience, I'm in that kind of gold diggups zone, someone else will hire me a good district. Just I think about now and then, cuz I was that, looked, looked back, my district a little bit too. Then is there were, there were people to hire. Right now, there are no people, like, I'm not, like, there's no people hire. I talk to colleagues and friends in other districts, they're like, you're fully staffed. Like, you have teachers, like, you have sped teachers, you have air professionals. Um, so like, even if we have people that be. Uh, we could be in bigger problems with our mandates, cuz we're not gonna have anybody there, and we owe compensatory services, so there's. That's more money than that.
I think the estimate in Massachusetts in terms of the teacher shortage was about five thousand, like across the state.
So, just. For clarity, I guess, a little bit, and I should probably know. When. When someone in town goes to one of our sister schools, usually at the high school level, that has no effect on our.
The only thing that the town pays into is Southeastern Regional and Bristol Ag. But if anyone.
What about the Charis, Charis School as well?
First school as well.
And so again, for clarity, they don't have to go through this budget process, they essentially hand us.
Yeah, they hand us an invoice. I mean, the charter school doesn't hand us an invoice, but it's a different funding model, but the. Correct. We do not, it does not come out of our budget.
Cuz I know it was that, last year or the year before, we had a huge bill for Bristol Ag for the. Dozen students we send there.
Yeah, well, and that was the, like, the building project over there, I believe as well, so.
Again, not that we don't recruit or any. What if we opt out, like, how does that system work if we say we're not going to? Like, are we just automatically a Southeastern or a Bristol Ag partner? How's that work? Like, if we, if we said, it's Norton, or you go pay to go somewhere else on your own dime. We can't do it.
We can't do that. Oh, we can't do that with the, the vocational. Because we do not offer that prefering here. Those are public schools, so the students have the right. To attend those public schools in those specialized areas. So if we want a member, um, so when Albor is not a member district of a vocational school. Because they have all their own vocational programs. Um, and if a student at Albor High School wanted a program that they did not offer at Albor High School, they would have to send that student.
So every student, so every student is, is, uh, entitled. Vocational education. So even if they're, they're denied, like sometimes they're considered denied, uh, at Southeastern. They could go down to another vocational. And and they're entitled to if there, there's an opening there, so they can keep going until they find an open. It's how it works.
Well, there's no.
Well, then they.
Yeah.
Go.
So against my other question.
Right, yes.
If the system wasn't broken. And it is, if a student chose Southeastern or Bristol Ag, essentially, that could be considered school choice. And it would only be five thousand dollars theoretically.
So.
If that program.
The funding for vocational schools is, it's, it's not, I mean, Christian used to work in a vocational school, it's, it's not the same, it's.
Well, and also, I will say this, I, and their, their costs are different.
It's, while was, it, while we take shots at those guys, it does cost them more to educate.
And it's a great opportunity for students that we cannot offer them right here. Um.
Two or three kids are gonna be Southeastern and said no.
So school choice is an option for us. We do not need to participate. But we do need to have access for our students for vocational and agricultural.
And I, I know, I think you asked, how many kids is school choice about?
Um, it's a small number, um. Yeah. Um, it's, I think not counting the charter. A very small number, but we can pay that. Oh, at most. Um, but just one thing that often gets brought up, um, that's within the community and for the nineteen. People that are watching, maybe the five that watch, they're gonna play here, um. Could we touch upon this whole notion of like, let's build a school, cuz I feel like everybody always talks about that. And like, how enrollment would impact. Like, you know, everyone's always saying, enrollment's going down, why don't we combine the elementary, blah, blah, blah. So if you have any insight, again. For the, for the public here. Um, so number one, we have eighteen students at school choice out. So it's not a future. That does not include charter or like Southeastern or Bristol Ag. Um, in terms of closing the school, while our enrollment has decreased over the years. Just like my example of the ten second grade teachers at J C S, they're either five, um. That's only one factor of the spaces that are used within our schools. Uh, we have a lot of special education programming. Uh, I know we're doing a special update later this spring for you. Um, and we've got some really great data to show you, ten years ago, how many programs we had across districts. How many programs we have now, how many students were enrolled in those programs, how many students now? And of course, there's a correlation to ten years ago, how many students we had at districts, and now how many students we have that are in our district programs because we created. These really great programs. Um, so that is a big factor of, you know, how those spaces are full. Um, we do rent out a very few spaces. Um, there's three classrooms at J C S. Um, there's. Two classrooms at the Y, three classrooms at the Y? Okay, Mari says four. Um, so and a couple at, um, the high school and middle school as well. Um, but not a huge amount, and we're looking at those numbers as part of our, you know. District alignment study, I think we decided to call it by the way. Um, so those are things that we're looking at and will, you know, we're already working with Rees to like, pull back a classroom at J C S for next year, cuz we, we need space. Um, for our specialized programs. So, um, in specialized programs, again, just for those who may not. Have that knowledge of what that means, their student to teacher ratio, like, there's less. Students within that classroom. It's not like twenty students are in a specialized class, we're talking like. Yeah, that's just all was the max, as we basically mentioned earlier. Um, and and those are for students that have, um, specialized learning needs that require that small classroom setting. Um, I, Sherry and I had a great tour at L G N a couple weeks ago, and. She saw just the number of classrooms that are currently being used at L G N for, um, some of our specialized programs. And and the spaces is very different for the needs of those, of those students, so.
And remember those students with the level of need, if we did not do that within district.
Yes.
These are not students, they're. These students get, uh, inclusion opportunities, but they need a lot more. So without that, they have to go to an out of district placement. Um, which again, there's that additional cost of transportation.
And it's always more expensive to send a student out than it is to develop.
You know, I can't, I can't find it right now, um, but we did put together, like, um, over the last ten years, uh. The growth of the programs, you know, about like.
Ten to thirty-three.
Thirty-three, something along, I mean, I I wanted to give you the exact list, but just on the needs of students.
Um, which is also adding two classrooms.
With that.
Which is essentially adding two classrooms.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For ten kids, no, thirty-three, so you're adding.
You're absolutely adding classes, and, um, but you're also saving those out of district. Which is more than half, despite the, the crisis and despite the needs of, as, it's not just here, nor across the board. Um, due to, as, as Benny said, you know, sort of the, the, uh, services that kids are not able to get during the COVID times. Our, our out of district numbers are still lower because we're able to service these kids, but they pay classroom space. So, uh, Dr. Marcus and and, um, Higgins and and Jason and I were talking today about. Trying to shift some of our programming around, and one of the issues that came up was like, okay, but where? Like, where do we put the rooms? Who do we move? What, what do we do differently? So, you know, just to do that, and some of that has to do with. We don't have enough buses, we don't have enough vans to get that certain population all over to the L G side of town, so.
I think it's hard for people that, sorry again, I think it's hard for people to understand too, you know, the needs of our students this day and age. We have a certain population in town who, who kids, who their kids grew up here, wherever. Very different. I grew up very different than how kids nowadays are growing up. The needs of our students have grown. It's, it's, it's astonishing, the needs, whether it's, you know, uh, mental health or, you know.
Just the way they learn.
Yes, I mean, it's just, so it's, it's very difficult for, for people of a certain generation to understand. What is needed in our schools, cuz all they're relating it to is, well, when my kids went to. What is needed in our schools, because all they're relating it to is, well, when my kids went to school, well, the love of God. Our world is so different. It's so different. And how we get people to understand that, I don't know. We have tried, we have talked, we have done community forums, we've done it all.
Every one of our CPAC meetings, again, very lucky we have people come to our CPAC meetings. We have people, so that's, that's a thing. But even with that small group and the things that we've talked about, um. You know, you've heard the needs, is the high needs of some of the kids that of the parents that are in that room. Uh, so those are the programs that that create the that, so in terms of closing schools, we guess. But when you go from ten, we're using ten classrooms, we're using thirty classrooms. Oh, that's, that's almost.
I would encourage you guys to do the tour like I, and and I've done the other schools as well. But even for me, where my kids are, you know, my oldest is two years out of high school and my youngest is a senior in high school. The changes from when they were in elementary school to now is astonishing to me. Astonishing. And watching what some of these kids are dealing with, our staff are dealing with, I mean, it's, you know. It's it's, I think it's eye opening and I I encourage you guys to to go and and take those tours.
So I I think, and I've heard this many times in my my years doing this, it's not. It's not as simple as just closing a building. Those kids go somewhere, that staff goes with them. At minimum, you would lose the custodial staff and the leadership of that school. But however, you might need to bring that leadership because of the increase to the other school. It's not, it's not a simple, oh, we shut a school and our and our problems go away. Because I can tell you, when we look at a, I didn't know, two point four million though, if I close a school, I'm gonna make it up two point four million dollars. Because it it doesn't reduce your staffing. It maybe reduces one of the buildings, but then you get into, now we have to possibly transport those students by mandate. So that's an expense, that's a transportation cost. And you just. Those who give the argument to close a school have no idea what goes on in schools.
It's an easy solution.
And I think there is um a misconception out there that the Yell school is not a school. And that there are no classrooms in the front part of the building. And I've heard that many times from people. Um, there are absolutely classrooms over there, you know, it's.
Maybe like for the Yell, right? Again, like, obviously, no, however, you walk in, you got two rings. That was, okay, that was fifth grade when I was there. So you have the two rings, so what's that right now? That's fourth, fill, filled. The bottom was like specials, we had like house, gym, whatever. Second floor was now one.
When you say walk in, are you saying the front or the main office?
Main office, yes. So the two rings, that's the area.
So fifth grade is the two, the second and third floor of the front building.
So eight classrooms.
Eight, seven, fifth grade technically has seven right now. We have one of those classrooms.
Plus reads and and plus reads, special information classroom.
So you have seven, you have seven out of the eight, filled on the second floor. And then top level is one, so five of the second, two on.
Plus we have a couple of specialized classrooms that are up there as well as um reading specialists and um. RDL teachers, our speech therapists, yeah, but so and then the reads classrooms, there are four spaces.
You'll see, I'll do you a tour, you'll see some some stuff, there um there are offices and closets, every one of closets.
Five classrooms on second.
In the front of the building. Fourth grade is three, sixth class and.
He's talking about the second floor. Second floor has five eighth grade classrooms. There's two more on the up the third.
So physical space there, so physical space, there's five fifth grade classrooms. We have our grade classroom program, which is specialized program. We have our language based classroom, which is specialized classroom. And then there is. Thank you. Oh, my fourth and last.
Alright, so just throw all classrooms in there. On the second floor of the Yell, how many rooms do we have?
Physical spaces.
Physical spaces of rooms. There's eight, correct? Five of those are used for fifth grade classrooms, three have been used for something else. Second floor, we have a few more of the left over. So in that section, there's sixteen classrooms. Seven of them are being used for fifth grade. We.
But they're also, correct, correct. So I think when when you're talking about shutting down a a building.
So I've been fortunate enough to be doing this long enough that I've gone through the recommendations of looking at every option for. Uh, Dan, I don't remember if you ever care when we did.
Yeah, we did the survey. People yelled at us because we got money for the survey after we did the survey.
It's 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 more complicated than than just shut down schools as we probably already talked about. So with respect to the Yell, so. You know, I don't know if the Yell is even a realistic option, because we have two grades. If you if you cut that, if you if you close that school, you have to put two grades somewhere else, right? You can't put them at the middle school, because the middle school has, however, goes six, seven, eight, right? So are you putting that the LGN, JCS, two grades? And it it's, it's not super, it doesn't really work, right? So what we're really saying is, we're gonna close the Yell shape. And the problem there is, is as Danny said, it's not just simply, okay, well, we lose all those expenses. I I can't remember the number was, when we looked at it, it was like two hundred thousand dollars of of savings. You're gonna move all the kids, obviously. Those kids now all, because right now they're not, anybody who lives less than a mile is not mandated transportation. They're not all mandated transportation, so that cost is not, all those teachers have to move as well. As Danny pointed out, with all those kids, you're probably gonna have to hire more administration as well. So what you're really saving is, you might save a couple of the um, you know, the the cust- the custodial staff. And whatever costs to heat and light the building. That that's about what you're gonna save.
Right, but you do not have the space in any other building.
This is a, this is a, we don't have, you know, we don't have the, the, uh, quite a problem, we don't have the um, the issue of. Uh, we have programs in those buildings now taking up space. This is if we have the space. It still doesn't really work very well. It's 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 something that we've looked at. I mean, it was. I'll say this, it was probably a more serious consideration than a lot of people in town probably know. That we were looking at potentially closing that. And after the study, they came back with a number and we're like, oh, my God. It's, you you know, it's peanuts. We were, the savings just weren't there. And and that's realistically. The only school I think you could possibly shut down, and it just doesn't, the math just doesn't work.
And that was an unwish.
MSDA projects would have to be paid back immediately. Um, because they were playing online. Um, and if you close a school and you have to open that, reopen that school again, you'd have to bring it up to code, just sprinkles. So that would cost you a fortune as well. So, okay, two factors that you wanna, right, kind of keep in mind, um, there'd be a lot of upfront money. Uh, and they're, yeah, closing the school is not.
Just wanted to bring up these points because I hear it.
Because when you said, hopefully there are people who watched the replay, I guess, is not the guy who did it, but. But hopefully those people who have those questions are watching this and and can get a sense of that. So it's better to bring it up.
And with Nick's prior suggestion, we'll say at the one hundred and eightieth. So, yeah.
Well, you know, I think people always say, well, our enrollment's down, but we did it before enrollment was up. But we've just heard the specialized program has taken off. Like, like, I said, I said it jokingly to Justine a couple of meetings ago. I never took MCAS. I've been on a high, I just had my twenty fifth reunion. So like, we've never, we've never, I never had MCAS. So just the simple standardized test that's now a requirement was not a thing twenty five years ago. So now the specialized programs, I can tell you right now, there wasn't any specialized programs when I was in high school. Or middle school. I can't remember, I'll let you see what, that's getting it done.
Wait, not to put you on the spot. We don't have any open classrooms in any buildings, right? They're all occupied.
Every space, yes. Yes, we have, uh, like, uh, Sherry's point, we have uh classrooms that have been taught at the stage at the LGN. Uh, we use closet spaces at high school, um, our AD's offices, also a closet space. Be- because we are just that spread out throughout the district now.
Storage.
Yeah, yeah. At high school, we had the wrestling room, but they had like a storage area. So they think it's, you know, we're. We've converted it, um, a closet at the, in the library of the high school to an office space.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say, the only way you would ever shut a school is if you added on. To let's say a JCS, I guess. If you ragged away on the JCS, you could hypothetically possibly shut a school.
Depending on the size of the.
But are difficult. But you could only go.
Oh, yeah, I gotta wait, I'm gonna answer. Yeah. I didn't know that, one away from you.
Alright, this has been a long meeting. Do we have anything else that we wanna bring out tonight?
Well, again, I guess the hundred thousand dollar question, where do we go over here? Like, what is. I mean, when do we make these decisions?
I mean, so I I think. We can, I can put together another budget with looks at the programs and what we're still looking at and be a better idea in terms of numbers. Um, we can bring you back a shortlist um at the end of February of what we think the positions will be.
I think that would be helpful. I think probably, um. First and foremost, let's stop saying if we get five percent, this, that that doesn't make any sense.
Because the joint meeting, even the five percent put the town in the negative, four percent was like.
Yeah, I mean, the five percent is like, that's, that's not, that's not a real option. So it doesn't make any sense if we got five percent.
I I think the best course of action is, we have to look at three percent and four percent and we're, we. We are gonna have to figure out how much between three and four percent with cutting this, school choice. You know, for us realistically, I think we have to aim for three point five.
And I, and I think that probably, I don't know how comfortable you are with this, I think, we probably need a little more granularity on positional cuts. And what that would be. And because I I. Again, our our job is to make hard decisions. I I think, and I always criticize other, um, people in town for not making hard decisions sometimes. So it would be hypocritical of me not to be willing to do that. So.
Well, we have a list of positions that we, you know, we think are probably. Of good ones, but you know, okay, we can do this, we can do this. Um, so I'll share that with you. I'm trying to be really cognizant of our staff to make sure that we're not saying that.
And so that's kind of what I'm, I'm, that's why I was saying, I'm not sure how comfortable you are, but I think we also need to, at some point, start saying, okay. And 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 quite frankly, I I think that just give us a list, but kind of, if you could give us a sense of like, what the prioritization of that list is. Yeah, so because we're gonna have to probably look at it and say, okay, you know, we can save a couple of these if we. Make, you know, some moves here or there. Listen, the cuts are draconian, right? There's no, there's no way around that. So if if. We need to look at it and say, okay, this makes sense, we can save this, this makes sense, we can save this. And there's only a part where we say. Doing this is not, you know, it's not a priority for me over saving this. Like, I. At 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 some point, we're gonna have to, you know, guns are butter, we're gonna make a decision. So it's. So so it's, it, but at some point, we have to say, okay, you know what? Saving that next person is unfortunately not a priority over keeping something else that we have or whatever, keeping fees to a reasonable level. So we're gonna have to make those decisions. It's gonna help us to know, like, okay. Where along the the granularity line are we? Like, what position are we talking about? Is, and and you may come back to us and I, we may look really, wow, we care more about this than that or whatever, like, we shouldn't know. So. Yes, we don't have a good, what, X, Y, and Z, but. You're uh number three on the new hired list, you probably have a pretty clear picture of that, it could be me. You know, so I don't think like, any guys are kind of out there in terms of like, if we're cutting positions and knowing what, you know. I think these people are probably assuming like, oh, my position's gonna be eliminated or I'm gonna be the one dropped because.
Sure, staff is nervous, especially.
It will start to manifest and request, but there is a recommendation. I anticipate that.
For sure.
Just kind of, Dick, you wrote me a letter.
This is never anything personal, right? Diary, it's terrible.
I would much rather hire people, but it's not, it's not really, we're gone.
Does any staff have any other comments or things you guys wanna add?
Can we all make any donations to millions of dollars?
I appreciate you all coming, fairly taking time in three hours out of your night to come and sit here with us and kind of talk this through and. You know, I certainly do appreciate all of you guys making the time, all of you. It's hard decisions that are gonna have to be made, it's a terrible position to be in, but yet we continue to volunteer to do this year after year, and here we are again. So, anything else? Anything else, guys? Motion to adjourn? Second, I was okay there.